Welcome to the City of Shakopee City Council Joint Meeting with the Shakopee Public Utilities for March 12th, 2019. If we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Thank you very much. President Ware?
The Shakopee Public Utilities Commission is resuming the adjourned regular meeting to order for the purpose of a joint meeting with the city council for March 12th, 2019. Mr. Secretary, would you please note the roll?
So noted.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, undregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving ahead, item number three, approval of the agenda, and that would be the new agenda that's on the table with some of those items that were not on the previous agenda, that were request 6E, 6F, and 6G. Counselor?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? President Ware?
We have an agenda in front of us. Any...
Mr. Chair, move approve the agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved.
Yep, very well. Great. Item number four, if any resident citizen that would like to come forward and talk on item not on the agenda tonight, please come forward and state your name and address to the record and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Going once, going twice. Seeing none, we will move ahead then to our joint meeting with the Shakopee Public Utilities. We'll start with 5A, the status of the current rate formulas for the Shakopee Public Utility Water Connection Charge and Trunk Water Charge.
You told his manager, Mr. Cooks?
Yes, we were made aware of the issues that the city council was wanting to discuss, and so I prepared information that I presented to our commission at our last meeting on the 4th. That same information is included in the packet that was delivered to the city administrator last Thursday. And in that, we are providing information on the status and the rate formulation that's used in the calculation of our water connection charge and our trunk water charge. With that, I've included a memorandum from Joe Adams, our planning and engineering director, and if it would be appropriate, we can have Mr. Adams go through the write-up that he had to explain the methodology that's used.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and city staff, President Wire and commission members. As John related, I wrote a memo at his request to describe past methodology used to derive the trunk water charge and water connection charge by the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. The commission initially adopted their trunk water charge and water connection charge policies and set fees in 1982 and 1983, respectively. They have adopted a number of resolutions since then to present day to adjust the rates that were first established for inflation using the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. And basically, what happens is, going back to the first study, a comprehensive water plan or plan update is created by consulting engineer who looks at the present information available on land uses within the jurisdiction, projected population figures, and takes a snapshot of what future facilities would be needed to supply a reliable water system to the city of Shakopee. These could be water supply wells and pump houses, water treatment, storage, booster station facilities, and trunk water mains. The commission has adopted a water policy manual that defines what the design criteria will be to build out the water system. And each year, a five-year capital improvement plan is developed to record what the projection is in that time period going forward based on coordination with the city's five-year CIP and the county's five-year CIP, and what the development community is telling us that they're looking at doing in the near future. The commission's goal has always been to build out the facilities in advance of development so that they're in position to support the development goals by the city council and by the development community. A couple of times in this history since the early 1980s, the commission also supplemented their studies of the comprehensive water facilities with a financial analysis to make sure that the E and R CCI was tracking actual costs. There were a couple of years where there were jumps in the trunk water charge and water connection charge due to the analysis that was done at those times, due to concerns that the, especially the trunk water charge fund was running behind and always running a deficit. And actual projects that were awarded to construct facilities, whether they were awarded by the commission or the city through assessment process or by development projects, were running at a higher cost than what was projected, and this was primarily due to the overheated economy that was occurring at those individual times. To derive the trunk water charge rate and the water connection charge rate, again, based on the comp plans, the consultant puts together a cost estimate for full build-out of the study area. Now, keep in mind, the study area hasn't always been the entire city limits, and with future annexation, it's been expanded yet again. And for the trunk water charge, it's an area charge. It assumes a certain oversizing cost based on a criteria to have a 12-inch water main on a grid east to west, north to south, on a half-mile grid. And there's a certain amount of developable area assumed. So, large undeveloped parcels like the Minnesota River Wildlife Refuge and Shakopee Midwakon and Sioux Community Properties are excluded from the study area because they provide their own water system. And the net areas are defined by the commission to be the gross area minus dedicated public right-of-way, delineated wetlands that remain after development, and dedicated city park land. There's a 15% allowance to reduce the gross acreage to the net acreage when developing the rate. So, you simply take the total sum of all the costs of the trunk water facilities expected for the study area divided by that net acreage, and that comes up with a rate. And then in between studies, that's adjusted by the E and R's Construction Cost Index, except for those couple of exceptional moments when additional financial analysis was done. In the case of the water connection charge, the units used are the equivalent SAC units, the Sewer Availability Charge units that are assigned by the Met Council to each proposed development, whether it's residential or commercial or industrial. So, the, again, consultant in the study would tabulate the projected costs of the facilities. The water connection fund pays for water supply, treatment, storage, and pressure facilities, and divide it by the projected number of SAC units for the study area based on the latest available data, whether it's a fully approved comprehensive plan by the city or a draft at the moment in time that the study's done. And these are done periodically, so there are corrections made at the time when new data is available. And then that's divided by that, the SAC units are projected based on those land uses and the population projections. So, one note is, it's a little cumbersome, the water connection charge. You see people in the community a little confused or a little perhaps thinking it means something different than it does. It is capacity. It's that supply, treatment, storage facilities. It's not the actual pipe connection, but sometimes that is misunderstood. Take any questions at this time?
Joe, in regard to the water trunk charge, you say that the acreage is net?
The denominator in the calculation would be the net acreage. So, gross acreage minus 15% to allow for dedicated right-of-way, dedicated park land, and delineated wetlands. That's for the study. When an actual plat comes forward, we use the actual amount of right-of-way, wetland, and park areas.
If a pond is required, do you take that out?
No, we do not. Stormwater ponding requirements have evolved and changed over time, but they're not included in the 15% allowance in the study, so they're not, utilities and drain easements, which are usually laid over stormwater ponding, is not exempt from the trunk water charge.
Why, why do you think that methodology is that way?
The trunk water charge is to fund the trunk water mains. They need to go from point A to point B, and it's immaterial as to whether it's a residential development or a factory or commercial development. The cost to extend across a parcel of land is a cost per foot calculated by the engineer, and the amount of water used on the site is not a factor in the trunk water charge. It is in the water connection charge, obviously. The city, or, excuse me, the commission decided to make their water access charge the combination of an area charge and a SAC unit charge by making it a combination of the trunk water charge and the water connection charge. Whether or not a parcel of land has a pond on it or not, the water main still needs to go past that to the next parcel so that it can be served with municipal water service. And how property owners decide to develop their property doesn't affect that cost. You could build one house on 500 acres, and you've still got to get the pipe across to the next parcel. So, whose cost should that be? The commission's philosophy has been it's each individual property owner's responsibility. They pick up the pipe where someone else extended it to their border, and they didn't need to extend it across to the next party.
And then when a developer comes into town, and if he's looking at some raw land, but he's going to build in a, to start with, a small portion of that, does the analysis of the infrastructure that's required for the whole area get captured and calculated? And then is that charged to the developer on the smaller lot, smaller starting area?
For an example of a residential plat, usually there's a preliminary plat of the entire parcel that developer controls, and they get that approved through the process. And it does show a preliminary utility plan for the entire area, including where the trunk water mains might go and where the lateral water mains might go, and how looping might be achieved, and each service line connection. But when they do phase one or first addition, and they only plat 30 of 300 lots, and then they plat the balance as an outlot to be further subdivided with additional right-of-ways, those outlots are exempt from the trunk water charge for the first addition. You only count the platted lots, buildable lots, and any permanent outlots that might exist. Through the city's development history, there's been varying times when the city would accept a stormwater pond as an outlot, and varying times when they only accepted it as a easement. And so, if it's a permanent outlot, it's a preservation area, and the city wants to preserve trees, and gives the city a credit against their park dedication fees, then we haven't charged those. The commission would give a credit, the same as the city has given a credit for park, whether it was for just keeping the trees without allowing them to be cut down as a passive amenity.
Other questions with the formula? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I think it's a great opportunity for everybody to understand how this works. So, I'm going to ask a couple of questions so I understand how it works. So, the first 30-some houses that get developed in the first phase of this example development, they've got the preliminary plan for where the water line is going to go through the whole property. They're going to pay for what's serving the 30 houses, and then when the next phase gets ready to be built, they're going to come back and do this next phase, and then they're going to pay for that section. And if all works out well and the plans don't change, the second section is going to line up with the first section, just like the preliminary plan showed all the way through the property. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And the developers is putting in the infrastructure for that first phase. They're putting in the lateral water main sewers and streets, and that's a cost to them also. But the trunk water charge is applied to the platted, buildable lots, and the net acreage takes out the dedicated right-of-way park land and delineated wetlands. And if they change from the preliminary and decide that the next chunk of land that was going to show a pattern of lots, it changes in some way, fashion, and there's a park there now instead of before, then we don't charge the park in the second addition.
Counselor Lehman?
So, what happens if the first phase of this development is your 30 homes, and the second phase is going to be another 30 homes, but when the second phase comes, instead of being 30 single-family homes, it's something different?
It's an apartment building. Instead of 30 individual lots, it's two apartment buildings on the same amount of space.
Right.
It doesn't really change the trunk water charge because it's the same area modified by what right-of-way needs were for that.
Right.
But the connection charge, the water connection charge may be different because when they pull the building permits, instead of 30 single-family homes and 30 units, maybe it's 60 units because each building by itself has 30 units in it.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, if you have 40 acres that are going to be single-family, and the next 40 is going to be single-family, and you put your plans together for what size pipes and how much water you're going to need to supply to 40 and 40 single-family homes, and the second 40 turns out to be two or three 150-unit apartment buildings, that's 300 units instead of 40 units, and the average amount of water per month is, what, 5,000 gallons or something? So, now you've like quadrupled the amount of water going into the second phase, and what happens to the pipes that are already in the ground and are, what if they're not to capacity to what's coming down the road if it's changing?
Well, the criteria didn't change. The criteria for the trunk system remains a 12-inch pipe every half-mile. So, if this happens to be a section where that 12-inch pipe lines up, then it's going through that area in the right-of-way or in an easement, regardless of whether they're single-family homes or multifamily structures. What changes might be the amount paid out for oversizing, because remember, the developer has an obligation by the design criteria to install lateral water main system. And the criteria includes a minimum pipe diameter by zoning, six inch for most residential, medium density, single-family. But for multifamily and commercial, it's eight inch, and for industrial, it's 12-inch. So, if you had it lined up and a 12-inch pipe was going through 40 acres, and it was anticipated from the study that the next 40 acres would be likewise single-family, then that was in that calculation. And then if the city's plans changed between our studies and said, "We're going to zone that next 40 acres for industrial," well, then that 12-inch pipe's still going to go through there, but then the commission's oversizing is lessened or eliminated because that's the minimum pipe for that zoning. It gets a little confusing, and I don't want to cloud the issue, but those minimum pipe diameters are by zoning, but there's another element to the design criteria that requires a lateral water main flow equivalent of a six-inch pipe every 400 feet in a grid, east to west, and north and south. So, while you may have fewer, larger buildings, you may still end up with the same size pipe going through there because of the land dimensions. Also dictate the size of the pipe. Again, if you have 40 acres, you're going to have, you know, if it's a square, that's a quarter mile by a quarter mile, or a mile by a mile. I forget, but I think it's quarter mile by quarter mile, and that's 1,320 feet, so you're going to have to have the equivalent of a six-inch pipe every 400 feet. You end up with four pipes running across there. But you don't always have four streets running in parallel like a grid. So, sometimes those are consolidated to two eight-inch pipes. But if one of those pipes needs to be a 12-inch because of the trunk criteria, then we're paying oversizing eight to 12, whether it's single-family homes or whether it's commercial. We base the oversizing cost on the base size, the lateral required size versus what actually goes in.
One last on this topic. So, earlier, we were talking, you were talking about the storage capacity and the pumping capacities and these types of things that go into all of this calculation. So, if you have the 40-acre single-family and 40-acre single-family, and you change the second 40 acres to a more intense use, aren't you going to have to pump more and have more storage capacity?
Possibly, if it's a water-intensive industry, but some warehousing uses don't use a lot of water, but they have a large fire flow. That's why there's an element in the water connection, or trunk water charge that includes a, or excuse me, the water connection charge that includes a per-square-foot for large warehouse-type buildings that don't use a lot of water so that they will pay a supplemental contribution for the fire-flow system requirements.
And that's for the flow of fire protection?
Yeah. But please keep in mind, when the studies are done, we're looking at thousands of acres, hundreds if not thousands of acres. So, changing 40 acres here or there kind of balances out in the big picture.
Right.
Counselor Clay, or Commissioner Clay?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I just wanted to mention that there should not be any surprises in development, like you were anticipating three phases of 30 houses each, and then all of a sudden in the second phase, there's an apartment building. That should all have been talked about and worked out in the preliminary plat process. If all of a sudden the developer wants to change their mind halfway through the development, they're going to have to go come back and restart or do a replat of that area, and all those calculations, whether it's water, road right-of-way, whatever, are all going to be recalculated and relooked at as you redo the plat. So, there shouldn't be those kinds of surprises.
Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You had talked about, Joe, you had talked about adjusting the water connection charge and the water trunk charge over the years, for some calculations and economies and things. Could you elaborate on that a little more? Because what I'm seeing is, we kind of went back to 2012 and took a look at when we had spuck in front of us before and talked about our concerns with development fees. And since 2012, I see the, my calculations, the water trunk charge has increased by 68.4%, and the water connection charge, 38.8% increase. Was the calculations that far off, or was just development changed so much?
I don't know the exact year, John. It was when the commission made the decision moving forward to include a 2% rider on top of the E and R Construction Cost Index. And then specifically with the trunk water charge, because each year it's looked at, the financial director informs the commission what the status of each fund is and where it's projected to be at the end of the next cycle. It's been running a deficit, and it's a concern to the commission. They have added a lump sum the last two years on top of the percentage increase of $500 per unit.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, that increase was based on a study that was done by Sheldon Matson in 2007 and followed up by financial analysis by Bill Fahib with Northland Financial. There was an awful lot of discussion taking place. If you look at the way the fees had gone on, I'll concentrate on the water connection charge. Water connection charge that with the development that was taking place within the city of Shakopee, we had to make two what we consider significant changes in that amount based on studies that had been done by our consultants. One was in 2003, which is kind of a few years into the tremendous growth that was taking place in Shakopee. The commission was provided information that we saw... The commission was provided information that we saw our funds going into the negative over time. And so decisions had to be made. So we had had a study done in 2003, and that's when there was quite a significant increase in the trunk water charge and the trunk water charge. We followed that up several years later with the growth continuing at such a rapid pace in Shakopee with another study because, once again, our projection showed that we were starting to decline in what our revenue projections were to fund the infrastructure that was needed to provide for that growth within the city of Shakopee. And in 2006, there was, and Mayor Marjorie were on the commission at that time. You may recall the discussions that we had. But we made a, kind of an interim change of a twelve-percent increase to that until we could have another study done and look at the cost of the infrastructure building out because it wasn't matching up with what our last study had done in 2003. Thirteen different meetings in 2007, trunk water and water connection charges were discussed with the commission, with the outcome being a study that was done by Sheldon Mattson. And it was at that time, the projections that we had from our financial analysis was to increase both the trunk water charge and water connection charge by six-percent a year to stay in front of that growth. The commission had some issues with that projected growth. They felt that that was a bit extreme. And so they had come back and had a motion that they wanted to just increase by the engineering news record, which had been the standard increase that we have, which bases the cost of construction of infrastructure and kind of the metro area that we have here so we can kind of get a heads-up on what we feel that the rate of increase of construction projects are. And then instead of the six-percent increase, the commission recommended and passed by resolution going up, the engineering news record plus two percent. That's been in place since the 2007.
What year was that?
2007. That resolution was passed. And with that, there was a couple of caveats. One was that the commission wanted us to relook at those cash flows that we had in those funds to make sure that was sufficient. So we did an in-depth study that was brought to the commission in 2010. We did another one in 2014. And with that, we look at cash flow projections on a five-year basis, going forward every year in our budgetary meetings that we have in setting these. It was at the point in 2007 also that there was a direction from the commission at that time is when we see some of the graphs that were included in that financial analysis, there seemed to be kind of a change in what was being collected and what we anticipated those costs would be. And that took place about 2020. And so with that being said, we followed up on commission direction at that time. And for us to do a complete analysis of what the trunk water and the water connection charges would be, we needed a comprehensive water system analysis done. We had that completed this year. That was approved by the commission in September of 2018. And with that, money was provided in our budgetary process to hire a consultant in 2019 to re-look at those fees and re-look at the total projected cost of the build-out of the entire Shakopee system and what infrastructure was going to be required. And then based also on what the fund projections were going to be based on funds at that time. So we have not contacted the consultant yet, but we've talked to our commissioner, our present commissioners at this time. We'll have that study done, and it'll be presented to the commission during our budgetary process. It begins in late August into September. And there may be changes coming up with what that rate might be. We don't know at this point in time, but we're waiting for that analysis to be done. And that would be ready where we could make any changes that might be recommended per commission direction and motion in going forward in 2020, keeping on the base of what commission direction was at that time.
Thank you. So talking about the formula and exactly what the water connection charge pays for, the water trunk charge, water, the water trunk charge, treatment, storage, and boost comes out of the water trunk, right?
Supply, treatment, and storage, so the drilling of wells and the pump houses.
So I've been thinking about this on the formula. And so when you build a storage, that's a tank, right? And when the last tank you built was off of Wood Duck Trails?
That's correct.
Does that benefit the entire system? Or, you know, it looks like development pays for that, but yet that infrastructure that's gonna go in place helps the whole system, system-wide.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so in the early 1980s, when the commission was faced with how to fund expansion of the system, anticipating development going forward at that point, there was a water storage tower on the high school property, which is now Junior High West. And it's referred to as the golf tee or the golf ball. There's the stand pipe, the one by the cemetery and the prison out on both on Tenth Avenue. And the racetrack was being discussed, I think, at the time. I wasn't here until 1992. But the tower was built on County Road 83. And I'm not entirely sure, I've heard some of that was through TIFF. But it was looking at full development of a study area, did not include the entire city. And additional storage requirements would be needed, so that was what was put into the projection. So the storage tanks that were added, Tank Four on Dominion, Tanks Five and Six out on Kelly Circle on the east side of town, and Tank Seven, the one referred to on Wood Duck Trail, they all came after that. And they're all there to supply additional storage for the growth that occurred in the interim. We do have a complicated water system. We're not a piece of flat ground with one pressure zone. We have three pressure zones. We have limitations on where we can drill wells due to D and R restrictions to protect natural features like the Savage Fenn, Eagle Creek, and Boiling Springs. We cannot drill wells east of County Road 83 anymore. We do have two wells east, Wells Four and Five in the industrial park that were inherited from Eagle Creek Township. But we can't drill wells east. And so when we put in a tank, like Tanks Five and Six on the far southeast part of town, built into the hillside to supply the future storage needs of a full development of that pressure zone, the normal pressure zone, it stretches from there and complements the existing tanks that I mentioned before, not just the South Bridge area, but the area spreading east and west that's in that normal pressure zone. And then when we add the tank on Dominion and the one on Wood Duck, those are for the first high zone. And none of that area was developed at the time they established this fee. And they did project storage needs. And as I said earlier, the study area keeps growing because the city keeps expanding. But it also keeps shrinking because the tribe purchases additional property, and they're gonna serve it themselves. So it's a state of flux. Each study takes a snapshot. But it's an integrated system. We pump up the water into elevated towers. We use booster stations to supplement that into the second high zone. We have one for the southeast corner of the city. We're constructing one this year for the Windermere area. And those rely on the wells that are in the wellfields in the first high zone to, you know, do that. And then the tower in the second high zone will supplement pressure through pressure-reducing valves into the first high zone. So each piece benefits another part. It's an integrated system for reliability and for spreading the cost out.
I guess just looking at it, that development is on trunk water, then pays for that storage, but yet in the end game, it all benefits the entire system in an interconnected system. Is that correct?
It interacts that way. It works that way. But if you did not build a single other building, we wouldn't need to add another piece of infrastructure.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think in a sort of a not overly simplistic sense, I mean, if there was no increase in the usage or users within the system, that means new development, you know, extending the system out, there would be no need for additional tanks or storage tanks or whatever. So in one way, it may benefit the entire system. But in another way, it's not necessary unless you account for the increased capacity necessary occasioned by increasing development.
I understand that. And then actually, the same question for treatment. How many treatment facilities do we have now?
Well, at each pump house, there's treatment. At this time, that consists of the majority of them of adding chlorine as a disinfectant and fluoridation per state requirements. We do have iron and manganese elevation in a couple of wells where we add a polyphosphate to suspend it, and then we periodically flush that out of the system. In the past, the commission was concerned because they saw, through all the testing that is done to make sure that the water is potable and safe to drink, that there was fluctuations in nitrate levels, and they seem to be increasing in certain wells. And studies were done on what the cost of treatment for that element, if, should they ever exceed the maximum contaminant level. We have had to, you know, moderate the use of certain wells or manage the use of certain wells. But we have not yet had to build the nitrate treatment plant. But another well, I think it's three, has some elevated radium.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, the significant increase that we had in 2003 was a decision to provide the funding for potential treatment that we have in place. And at that time, Joe is correct, that we had issues with iron and manganese as we went up the bluff line. And when we stayed in the lower levels along the river, we had nitrate levels, which are very familiar, that we have quarterly nitrate reports. We follow that real close. What has happened since then is changing regulations with the federal government and with the state of Minnesota as far as water quality. We discovered that our deeper well that we have at number three has radium two-twenty-six, two-twenty-eight elevated levels. And right now, we have a contingency plan that we can only use that in an emergency case basis. We have the ability with the funding now, if we need that capacity within the normal elevation area as it grows, we have a couple of options. We can put in a treatment plant to treat for that, to where we can use number three. One option that we're looking at, we can drill a shallower well, and we can blend those waters to try to make that usable. At this point in time, we don't need that, but that's in place as there's continual redevelopment as we're looking at in, say, the downtown areas or wherever. We may need that capacity that we have in place, so that's one issue. The most recent issue that we've had, and you might be familiar with that, is we're building a booster station to supplement the BHS facility and the Windermere development that we have. In our booster station plans, we wanted to put a well in that area along with that. There was cost savings to do all the work at one time. We discovered we have water quality issues there, that manganese levels were sky-high. I'll use the word there in our preliminary testing. We did several rounds of testing. We were very concerned about the quality of that water. We made the decision at that time, the commission did, is to postpone putting that well and to look into a different site. We believe that even staying somewhat in the area of that booster station, we are going to have that iron and manganese issue there, that more than likely, we will be forced to build treatment because that, you know, dirty water is not acceptable to our customers. So we have that, we have that in place. So more than likely, those treatment plants, we have those in our five-year projection of our CIP. You'll see that. More than likely, they may have to be built within the next several years.
No, I mean, you've had a treatment facility in your CIP for ten years.
That's been a contingency, that's been in place, yes.
And adjusting your fees to go along to save money to do that, right?
Yep. And that's...
Any other questions on the formula aspect of it?
Sure, Mayor. Joe, can you kind of go back a little bit and talk about the grid we talked about before? These water pipes are not just a pipe that shot out there by themselves. There is a purpose behind it, and why do we do that? And there is a cost, obviously, to that as well.
For the trunk system specifically?
Yeah, for the, for, yeah, for the backup and being able to get
Terry, if you could speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you turn.
I'm not used to that, yeah. I'm used to looking at who I'm talking. And the grid system that we use for the water, so that we can reroute it if we have a breakage. So referring to the water policy manual and specifically the water main design criteria, Commissioner Yost is correct. I described the lateral water main requirements for any property seeking to get water service is to install a equivalent flow across their parcel, east to west and north to south, so that the next parcel may connect. And that would be equivalent to a six-inch pipe every four-hundred feet. That is based on the original Shakopee plat and the original water main grid system in the core area of Shakopee. And as the system has grown out to the outer limits, we've followed that criteria and enforced that criteria on each development. But a super grid beyond that flow of a twelve-inch every half-mile, east to west and north to south, was deemed by a fire flow study done in 1976 to be desirable and needed to provide adequate fire flows in case of a large fire. We've had a few in town in the time I've been here, the one at St. Mark's Church, the one at Cota Energy Plant, where tremendous volumes of water were dumped on there to keep that cool so it wouldn't reignite while they fixed the problem with the material handling. But that is so that if there is any interruption or break in the system due to a frozen pipe, a broken pipe, a digging accident, that there's ways to reroute the water around those contingencies. And that's the commission's decision to have a reliable, redundant, secure system for those types of issues. Is that what you're getting at?
Yep.
Very good, Joe. Thank you.
More questions on 5A regarding the formula that goes into the two fees that we're talking about tonight?
Here, I just the historical water trunk charge trend sheet that we have on the table. Do you have a copy of that?
The commissioner does, the commissioner does not have a copy.
Okay, I'm looking at the historical water trunk charge trend.
I think we can get that up on the screen.
Yeah, we're gonna put it on screen as well. Councilman, you want the water trunk charge?
Water trunk charge trend.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor? While we're waiting for him to bring this up, is there any, is this something that was just developed? Or is this something that?
Our staff developed it.
I was just curious as to why we didn't have an opportunity to see it before this meeting so that we have our staff verify the information. You know, sometimes there is information, clerical errors.
Just, we're trying to take a long-term look at the fees and that. Councilor Lammon?
My question specifically was, you know, when I look over this chart and I see the four-point-threes and the six-point-two or the four-point-two or the five-point-three, it kind of reminds me of our COLA increases yearly at the city. You answered the 2003 increase and the 2008 increase, which were both substantial ones. But I'm looking at this chart, and if you notice, it's eighteen and nineteen, or twenty-two and a, I'm gonna call it nineteen. And I don't know that I heard the rationale for that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if I may answer that. If you see, looking at this chart and trying to get that information, you see when the bigger changes seem to happen, it's during periods when there's rapid growth within the city of Shakopee. When you're pointing out the, kind of the normal increases that you call COLA increases, those are based on the engineering news record numbers that we talked about, the two percent. But the last two years is based on cash flow analysis that's done by our finance director. As redevelopment and development within Shakopee is starting to pick and development within Shakopee is starting to pick way up again and get back to the early days of the 2000s, when it's, there's just so much going on. When we look at our cash flow, we're required in these instances that we have to outlay for those oversizing costs before the development happens and when the development is plotted. And then we get the fees, we collect those fees after the fact. So there's a lag time before we're able to get those dollars in place. So the commission has made, based on the analysis done by our finance director the last two years, that besides the engineering news record and 2% that I've talked about, that's been standard for water connection charge and also trunk water charge, to make one-time additions of an extra $500 in both 2017 and 2018 that were reflective in 2018, 2019. And that's the, that's why those increases appear that way.
Yep.
Councilor Whiting?
I guess from this chart, you can kind of understand, Mr. Saltz, in the audience here. And we recently had a developer come in, Willie McCoy's came in to talk to the council and trying to get some sort of reconciliation from the city for the fees they're paying, kind of globally, I'll say. And when you see this chart, you can understand why there was some concern. You know, we do these studies and surveys in our, in our community, and community members want restaurants. So, Mr. Saltz, a developer brings a restaurant, and they're having trouble finding a way to make that development come, come to fruition because of that end graph chart there, that 18%, which is close to $4,500 for, for this water trunk charge. And I'm not sure what, what size that is in development. But you can understand why the concern.
Councilor Whiting, members of the council. In my discussions with Mr. Bannerman, and then also in discussions with their soul town, their issue was more directed with the water connection or capacity charge as opposed to the trunk water charge. And as Joe mentioned, the reason for the infrastructure is those costs, too. We like to give the analysis of, there's a, I guess a common thread that people say when they pay a water connection charge, well, we're just connecting to those pipes that are there. Why, why is it so expensive? Well, we like to give the example, as far as Willie McCoy's or a restaurant, is that we have to design the system to have the capacity that's available for that restaurant. And that restaurant has peak times. I give the example on a Super Bowl Sunday. Our hope is that Willie McCoy's is packed to the hilt, and they're standing room only, and they do great business. But with that great business, there's a peak demand for water usage at that point in time. But we can't design our system just for that. We also, God forbid, if a fire would happen at that same time, we have to design the system that at his peak usage of that restaurant, or any restaurant, or any development, or any business, at that peak time, we have to have the capacity to fight a fire if that would happen. So there's a lot that goes into the design of the system, and that's reflected in the infrastructure costs that we have in place. And that's one of the reasons why our costs are, I'll admit, on kind of the high end of the, of the surrounding areas. We get into the next agenda item, we'll be able to compare that, too. But that's, that's one of the reasons why the costs are significant. But the philosophy of our commission is that new development or new additions to the system pay for the new additions that are required to the water system and not the existing customers that we have in place. We don't think that the restaurants that are existing in town today should have to subsidize what the actual cost would be calculated for a new restaurant or a new business in place. So that philosophy has been in place since the eight, early 80s, that new additions to the system or increases of water usage with an existing customer have to pay their fair share for additions required to serve the system.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner.
One thing to keep in mind, since the development of Willie McCoy's was brought up specifically, these charges, whether it's the trunk water charges or the water capacity charges, these charges are designed to benefit the property throughout the entire commercial life of that property. It's not the, you know, number of years that a tenant has a lease with a landlord. It's not however long the particular property is devoted to use as a restaurant, or even however long that particular building sits on that property. It's for the entire useful, commercial life of that property, as long as the usage does not change. That would trigger the council to change the SAC or increase the SAC, in which case that would account for the additional capacity that the new usage would impose upon the system. So although, you know, I sympathize with the developer, especially in this case, where, you know, perhaps those charges would more appropriately be paid by the owner of the property rather than a tenant, since it is a substantial benefit to the owner to have those charges paid upfront by the first tenant. In the typical case, those charges would be imposed upon the original owner, and whether it's amortized or spread out over the entire useful life of that property.
So when we talk about these developer fees, I guess, because we're not talking about base water rates per thousand, we're talking about developer-driven fees, water connection and water, water trunk charges. When we look at these charts, I am complicit in these fees, because I was on this board for a long time, and I raise my hand. But I do feel that there's a, needs to be a good understanding grounding of history, and we tried to have some from Joe Adams and John. This, one of the major studies was done in 2007, leading into 2008. You know, the go-go years of Shakopee were, were at hand. The West End was going to be the new horizon, and our funds had some short-term deficits at that time. The next high-growth area in the West End. Significant costs of infrastructure was dialed into our CIP at that time for a couple different areas. And after reading that study in the last week or two, they identified three areas. And one was the West End. One was an area called the Southeast, and the East area off of, off Spuck was planning about $18 million worth of infrastructure for three significant areas. They raised rates. One of the options was to raise rates, bond short-term, and they chose to, we chose to raise rates. However, shortly thereafter, two major things happened. The housing bubble bust, and home values maxed out and started to decline. As that values and home building declined, at that point, the Shakopee, Midwauk and Sioux community purchased a vast amount of land from a bankrupt developer in the Southeast region. This wiped out any future need for some major infrastructure in one of those areas that Spuck had been planned. However, rates continued. The recession lasted, obviously, till about 2012, 2013. Shakopee was slow to recover compared to other communities. Housing starts, I believe, in that period were well under 100, and I think we bottomed out at about 25 units in one year, 30 units maybe in 2014. However, the plan for the West End was starting up again. The D.R. Horton never really gave up on that, that area. In 2015, an early study was started for the West End area that included land, actually a little bigger than D.R. Horton. The utility still needed to invest about $9 million into that area, according to your CIP. Wells, booster stations, because we had to pump uphill for a little bit, and get on top of the hill for a tank. As I look back in retrospect, though, from 2008 to 2015, we had a lot of years of increasing our rates to collect money for this infrastructure. Ten years to plan and get ready. And while our rates were increasing today, now we have a rate that's, in our water connection charge, is $6,000. But we still don't have a well. I'm not sure when the booster station will be built, hopefully soon. And the tank, and I'm not sure if you have a lot for the tank. I know years ago, when the school is gonna build there, you had a agreement there, but that fell through. Our West End, we don't want those fees to be an inhibitor to growth in any area. And I can talk about some other areas, but now, the infrastructure is needed now, right? Because Horton's, can't build them fast enough, just like the good old days there. And I looked at the West End study, and according to the study, you were looking at the areas south of 169, from Marystown West and south to County 78. And as Joe talked about, that infrastructure that we, that I just mentioned, a booster station, the tank, would service all that great area, correct? Greater than Horton, because it's kind of the whole area, according to that area. However, I looked at some information from D.R. Horton that, under their fee structure for what they just have planned, or under their control, they're gonna pay out about $8 million in fees. And to me, it appears like Horton is paying upfront from their area that's gonna cover infrastructure from this area. And I, I struggle with that. From your CIP, cost of the infrastructure that we're gonna see here shortly in the next year or two, based off of the Horton's current landmass, and you're right, we are expanding. Annexation has occurred. Growth is coming. We expect more annexation. And so I'm thinking, how can, we have 10 years of saving up that money, but then one major developer in town has, is getting in combination of their fees, water connection charges and water trunk charges, their fees are significant on top of the amount of money that we have saved for that area. And do you have a comment on that, John?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Actually, just about two weeks ago, Mike Sewell, who represents D.R. Horton, came in and we had a meeting. In that, D.R. Horton and their team had done some analysis of what their potential costs were gonna be to serve there. We matched that up with calculations that Joe Adams and his planning and engineering department had done. And there was surprisingly agreement that he understood what the costs were going to be to serve that area. I'd have to ask Mr. Adams, is that something that we would be able to share, if he'd like to discuss at this level?
Joe?
Because we've had many discussions with Mr. Sewell and, and the infrastructure that they have in place. To address the, the first part of the question is the continuation to collect those fees when there was a slowdown period in the economy here. The commission had gone through with those annual increases going forward to build up in those reserves to where we can handle the big influx of construction that we're going to have now. We're not liberated to say, but we are in negotiations to secure some property. And with that property, the booster station is, has the contractor's been awarded, that was $3.5 million, which was more expensive than we thought. But that booster station will only serve upwards of maybe 200 homes. So in looking and trying to put the infrastructure in place, so D.R. Horton or any other developer continue to grow on the West End, we're securing some property that we can put a storage facility and the well that I had talked about earlier on that site, too. So with what we anticipate the land costs and what the infrastructure costs would be to serve there, we're still well over $6, $6.5 million. That's off the top of my head. I'd have to look to verify those numbers. But we also, in looking forward, that one thing that, as you mentioned in some of the previous studies, where some land from the tribe maybe went out of there, there's, there's a new process that we're looking at now, too. And that's with the orderly annexation with Jackson Township. And our new study that we did takes that into account. As far as I understand, that orderly annexation, the city has a right to annex up to 250 acres a year until the entire annexation is there. So we need to plan accordingly to what that development may be in that area, that we can put the infrastructure in place to when people want to move there, they are gonna have water, they are gonna have electricity. And I think you well know that you've been a part of this community for a long time, that the utility's always been that kind of little bit of step ahead. And, and because we haven't had infrastructure, infrastructure in place, that someone hasn't been able to locate here.
Well, I mean, we want to have growth and expand the tax base. We also want, you know, technically, new connects and new, new users for our water department. And that's really the, the whole goal. I, you know, as I, when I said on that board, we got, my, I always used to say, we have to get on top of that hill and get a tank, right? And then do you, do you build it now, ahead of it, and you don't want to be too far ahead and then have no connects? And I do get that. But boy, this, this momentum is in, in full swing here for Horton. At our orderly annexation phased agreement update that Councilor Layman and I, you guys were at a couple of those meetings, you know, that, that is our area. But also around town, we've had other developments where now these fees, again, are pretty significant. I talked to the people at Dorn, and they say they're gonna be somewhere close to $4 million for their housing development. And yes, a lot of those are, you know, water connection charges, but it's in a compact, small, I'm not gonna say small, but, you know, it's not a spread out miles and miles of pipe, right? You can have one big pipe, service a whole building. Actually, it's much more efficient and effective than miles of single-family homes in that sense. But $4 million for Dorn alone in their development, and then looking at the entire build-out of the redevelopment of Canterbury at $400 million, it seems like, boy, that $4 million is gonna go a long way just for that area, those couple hundred acres there, in their final development. And that's the, the same sort of question I come up with for, like Horton. The developer, big developers paying, seems to appear like they're paying a lot that, for an area that's gonna be much bigger in the end. And you'd think that incrementally, as those, as it grows, the West End or Canterbury, you know, Dorn's one aspect of it, not the, you know, the whole end game of that, so. But did you have a follow-up, Joe? I'm sorry.
I thought you were gonna ask me a question, but you went on to a couple different topics.
You were commenting, I'm gonna make a comment on Horton.
About the Horton area. And yes, we did meet with Mike Sewell, and he did have fairly accurate figures for what their fees would be and what the infrastructure would cost. There was one item that he was a little low on. Yeah, but the, but the end result seemed to be that he was satisfied to see that the fees they were paying were in line with the infrastructure costs. But I had to point out to him, and I need to point, I needed to point this out to the commission at their last meeting, and I'll point it out now for your benefit of the council and staff and the general public. It's not that simple. We put the booster station in, and we'll put that tank in, and nobody in Windermere has any water. Does that surprise anyone? The only water that is there is coming from wells 20 and 21 that are over by the high school. And the commission built those before. During the time period, when you said we were saving money, we were actually spending money. We were building pump house 20, drilling wells 20 and 21, we were building tank seven. We've spent the money that was collected during that time. And now we're gonna collect more money to spend for more infrastructure, and yes, the tank. And if we get a well and a pump house up by the tank, or by the booster station, and we deal with the treatment issue, yeah, we'll be able to serve the Windermere development and points beyond to support the city's growth. But you don't, you don't build a tank gallon by gallon. The tanks five and six, there are 5 million gallons of storage. The commission had an opportunity to build that at one time to serve the entire needs, future storage needs of the normal elevation service district. So now, that development has been strong for the past several years, and we have the Amazon facility, and we have the other buildings that are going in there. Sandmire was built, now the Canterbury. We can support that because we have the storage already in place. But that doesn't mean we don't need more money for the facilities that need to come for the developments up the hill. And they need to contribute to the pot, because somebody else paid their share when we built those facilities.
Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I think most of you know I had an intimate knowledge of whack-and-sack charges about 10 years ago. And you'll happy to know I finally paid that off. I live out in Beckridge Park Estates, and we came to the city, and we had water and sewer issues, and we requested that the city help us work... And we requested that the city help us work through that. And be rest assured, anyone that has a house within the city of Shakopee have paid water access charges and trunk water charges and all those. You don't see them. You don't see it when you buy or sell your house. Mine was in about excess of $50,000 to get hooked up to water and sewer. That has to do with whack and sack, and having the pipes put in, meeting the specifications for the city for the pipes. It's a very detailed and expensive proposition. But my wife would not trade the sewer and water for anything. So in her mind, and in mine, I guess it was money well spent. But rest assured, every one of the council members that lives here, any of the staff that lives here in the community, have paid those charges. And we paid them at the going rate back at that time. There is inflation in here. Obviously, you can see that as the numbers go up. And we constantly are working with contracts, and we see the prices fluctuate on pipe. We, and obviously on the electrical side as well. And we deal with those. We don't pass everything on to the end user. Obviously, our water rates are fairly significantly, I, I think we're on the lower end. And we have, on the other side of it is, I believe, A, the water comes on when you turn the tap. Nobody's had that problem yet where the water hasn't. And we have good quality water. And then, these guys do a very good job of keeping the fluoride, right? We actually had a reduction from the DNR a couple of years ago where we were able to turn down the amount of fluoride we put in the water, because we do it so consistently and so regularly. So we have a lot of good things. And rest assured, this council looks at the financial thing diligently. More than once a year, we look at it on a constant basis. And that fund that we're talking about that has a shortage in it, we've looked at that. We've consternated over it. We've had to come up with solutions to do that. And we, you know, it's not like we can take money from a general fund and put it there. We don't have general funds. Anything that we do, money-wise, comes and goes in a fund, and it's designated for that purpose. And that's what it's there for. Bill was talking about the, the, the tanks and those things. That is what that money has to be spent on. We can't take it and say, wow, we're gonna lower the, the access charge or lower the trunk charge. We don't have that. We, only thing that we can do is obviously raise rates on the water. And I think for the most part, this commission and past commissions have been very diligent in not wanting to do that. So I, I just wanted to share that with you, that when we look around and understand those charges, every one of us has paid those throughout time. And do we want to stop having people pay those or not pay their fair share? I, I'm not necessarily in favor of that.
The water is good in Shakopee.
Yeah.
Well, let's, you know, we were kinda on this, the formula and how that works, and then, let's move to 5B here. We can kinda compare. And we've seen a historic, you know, the, the graph that you have is a, one that's on the board, a historic view of what, that 20 years of fees. Let's see how we compare to our neighbors. And I know that the utility does compare differently. Cities compare, the utility uses different comparables than, than the city. But we have a chart that was developed by our comparable cities, that both in budget, population. Some on this graph have water departments in-house.
One you're looking for?
Yep. So obviously, the green line is the water access or the water connection charge.
Who do I have that? 5B, is that in my 5B?
5B, comparison of Spuck Water Connection.
Yeah, do I have that chart?
Can you use that one? It's on the TV.
Right. No, I, we didn't get that chart either.
Yeah, you've got that chart.
So it might have been in another packet.
Counselor?
Is it?
So, some of these cities I feel are comparable for Shakopee, but they are built out. And, but some are still growing. And when I saw, first saw this chart, I went, how can everybody do it cheaper? What, well, they, we have different constraints. But Chaska's a growing community. Lakeville grows faster than Shakopee. Inver Grove Heights grows faster. Blaine's on here. I look at the, you know, back in the go-go years, you always figured who was making the, all the, all the starts, right? So I would like some help understanding after all these years of the water connection charge at 6,000, how can other communities do it cheaper?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I have not seen this. I don't, so I don't know. I would have a lot of questions on this right now. I don't know if I have time to comment on that.
In your packet, you had a chart of other cities that were, I think, neighbor cities. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, what we've done is, is for, this is typically an item that's almost always on a joint meeting agenda. And we've used the same information. I've used the same cities that we've had in the past ones. And what our commission has wanted is to compare surrounding cities, because there's commonalities that we have. They're along the river, they have bluff lines they have to deal with. They're a growing community. So we do have some issues with cities that are built out. They don't have infrastructure costs because they don't have to build any more infrastructure. They just have fill-in, or the infrastructure they have to build is somewhat minimal compared to us. If I may go to the chart that I had provided in the packets.
That's fine.
With that, we compared the cities of Chenhassen, Prior Lake, Chaska, Savage, Belle Plaine, Jordan, and Eden Prairie, and Spuck. What we have here, there's a couple of interesting things that I would like to point on this chart. Is that, as you can see, almost every city here, per the exception of Belle Plaine and Jordan, use the Met Council SAC determination on the basis for what they, how they calculate what they either call a water access charge, or water connection charge, or a system access charge. There's different names that they use. So I'd like to go through this if, if I could. Yeah, okay. As you can see, uh,
He, he could eat.
Excuse me?
Can we put that one that you're going off of on the, on a monitor sometime? The information that you're going off of, can we get that put up on the monitor?
We're doing it right now.
Okay.
There, see the camera up there?
We're just gonna try it.
I see he has it.
He's under the dots.
We'll get it. We're dialing it in.
CIA spice on light?
Quite.
Close.
Is that good?
Is that good enough for everybody? There we go.
If, if I may continue. Referring to the chart that's up on the, on the screen and going forward. Looked at a couple of things to go back, is that we see that there's, there's the commonality that in the development of a, of a water connection charge or an access charge or a system access charge that they have, the cities here use the SAC unit determination. And, and that's a number that's developed by the Met Council based on sewer usage, which is a common thread of, I believe, Joe, it's 700 and?
No, it's 74 gallons per day.
74 gallons a day, okay. That's a number right there. And so that's what we use. And then, as I'm sure the, the City Council's aware, that when a building comes, the Met Council makes a determination of what that SAC unit would be, and that's their process. The second thing that I would point out is that we have, under the column that I have called water, and that's what we're calling the water connection charge, or the water capacity charge, or the water access charge. And, and there's certain ways, and this is a little more detailed than the, the graph that I, I just noticed. And, and I have the backup information here from the actual conversations that we had with the cities, too. In Chenhassen, they have what's called a water hookup fee. And with that, it's 200, $2,233 per unit. And they also have a water access charge, which is $5,210 a unit. And so that, that number seems to be somewhat consistent what they have here. Chenhassen is right across the river. There's a lot of similarities that we have with that. Prior Lake, what I have here is, is, if you talk to them, they actually have two charges that they call a water connection charge. The first one is that $9,000, and that's a flat fee that they charge per development, whether there's two homes or there's 300 homes. That's just a flat charge they have for that. So, but they also have a secondary water connection charge, which is somewhat confusing. And I have the 2018 numbers there. I have the 2019 numbers available now, which is 1,800 per SAC unit. And then they have what's called a water tower charge. And that's kind of a separate fund that pays for certain infrastructure that they have in place. And that's an additional $1,452 per unit. Now, in the 2019 fees, it's, it's $1,510. Located both of those in the far right column is what seems to kinda best configure with our trunk water charge. And with Chenhassen, they call it a water lateral charge. And that's based on $9,186 per unit in the acreage that they have. It's kinda complicated the way they have that developed. And with Prior Lake, they have a water acreage charge, which is, is more consistent with what we have, and that's a $7,217. The 2019 are $7,506. As we go down the line, I have Chaska, which, not viewing that graph, I think the numbers are probably similar. Their water connection charge is $4,230. The water area fee, which is kinda correlates to our trunk water charge, is at $2,523. And I don't know if you want me to go down the line, but we, Savage, they have a tank source supply charge and a water connection charge. And both of those together are about $5,000, or $3,000 per unit. And then the tank's supply is a little over 2,000 per acre. Belle Plaine, they basers on a city cone, which is just kind of a formulation of what the SAC unit determination is. The assumption would be that Belle Plaine and Jordan got together and kinda developed this, but it's very similar to a Met Council SAC charge. And you see their units here, and they have different ones for residential, non-residential usage. And then Eden Prairie is a little more complicated that, instead of a SAC unit determination for resident, they have a residential equivalency charge, which is based, it's very similar to what one unit of a SAC charge is for a home. And then they have the system access charge, and, and this also gets complicated. And, and the fees change are pretty significant when we look down at the water connection charge that they have. One is $2,897 per acre, one is $7,370 per acre. But that's based on when they pay the fee. They can pay it early, before, if they pay it afterwards, there's fees there, so. And, and that compares the numbers. So these are the cities that we've looked at, years over years that we've had with that. I, I didn't have the time in putting this together to formulate some trunk fee charges that we have based on the other ones. I apologize, I could probably do that. But that's the numbers that we have.
And some of these are per acre, right?
Yeah, and that's where it comes, to, to get into a deep analysis, there's certain ways that you have to do that, because everybody does it a little bit different. And I think it's been discussed, too, that they have different ways of, of having that fund. They may have more included on their water rate fee and less on this one. It's how they manage that. So there's different ways. And I'll be the first to admit, they're on the higher end. But that's based on the actual infrastructure costs. The things that we have unique here is we have those separate portions of the second high elevation, that it's very hard to tie those together. That would be extra cost to do that. Joe Adams indicated, we can't drill wells where we want to put them due to DNR restrictions. We have the tribal land that we're not able to put water mains and facilities in that area. We have to kinda go around their facilities in place, too. So there's reasons, as pointed out in the studies, why those calculated fees are what they are.
Well, and some of these cities have topography as well, though. I mean, we have, we have topography, and I understand that. But, you know, Chenhassen certainly has some topography, Chaska has some topography. I'm trying to get a handle on some of these fees and then the total charge. So if I looked up at Shakopee, basically, per unit, and yours is per acre on the trunk charge. But you can divide that depending on how dense you're gonna have your, the acreage on the trunk charge, right?
Yes, and as we, the first presentation that we gave earlier is, is how that methodology is, and it's the actual infrastructure's costs that done that. This is all mathematically based on infrastr, actual infrastructure costs that we have in place. So there's, by no means that we're profitizing, or non-for-profit, we're not profitizing that. It's just we're just paying the true cost of that infrastructure in place.
Any, any questions on the comparison?
Mr. Mayor?
Matthew? Mr. Mayor, council members. As you can see, there are a lot of issues that go into analyzing the, you know, differing rates. It is really apples and oranges, depending on the type of, of charges and, and the methodology for doing it. I, I don't think it's really conducive to a, a nice chart, even though there, we do concede that our, our charges are, you know, high compared to some of our neighbors. But there are a lot of different issues at play here. And, and one of them I, I did want to bring up is, you know, keep in mind, I mean, we have a fixed pot. We have a fixed revenues and, and where to tap into those revenues. And if these charges aren't borne by the developers, it's going to be borne by the, the users of the system, the Shakopee residents, and increased rates. I recall a comment that was made before the City Council in December, where the development costs for the, the, the infrastructure needed to put in a large apartment building where the city hall used to sit, should, should be borne by the profits earned over a period of time in order to recoup those, those capital investments. Now, that presumes that there's a profit margin built into our usage rates. Now, as it currently stands, the only profit margin is the 20-some percent that we remit to the city, which I'm not sure exactly what the rationale or authority is for that. But that is the only profit margin that we have. So if, you know, the, the principle is true that we can recoup these, these costs over, you know, some period of time through the revenues generated from usage fees to the citizens of Shakopee, that means that the, the citizens of Shakopee are subsidizing those infrastructure costs to add that particular developers, you know, whether it is a residence, whether it's an apartment building, whether it is a restaurant. The citizens of Shakopee are basically subsidizing that. And, and, you know, that, that is, I think, the essence of what we're doing here is to have a frank discussion about who is going to bear the costs of this. And, and if the City Council, as the only elected body here at this meeting, decides that it should be borne by increased usage rates, because it has to be borne by somebody, you know, then, you know, so be it. But you, you, Mayor, City Council members, you're elected. We're not. We're appointed. And if you choose not to reappoint me after my term, so be it. My, my, my wife would probably be happy about it. But you are the ones who are elected, so if there is gonna be a policy decision that is gonna result in, in basically subsidizing the costs of adding a restaurant, an apartment building, whatever the case may be, onto our system as a city. And, and we're not talking about the regular usage of the existing citizens and, and businesses in this community. We're talking about somebody coming in and building a new infrastructure, new, new, you know, residences, developments, whatever. And if you want the citizens of Shakopee to, to bear those costs, to, and, and through increased water usage rates, then let it be known. And, but quite frankly, my oath of office as a commissioner, I can't do that in good conscience. I can't pick the losers and the winners. The losers and winners are to be chosen by those who are elected, not by those who are appointed by the City Council.
Wow, very good. You are the policy board of the utility. And yes, you are appointed, but you set policy and procedure of the board that you're in charge of. A developer came to our community and wanted to build and had an issue with the water fees. They wanted relief from us. We said, go talk to the utility. And I've sat on your board for 12 years. Could probably count how many people came to the board meetings on one hand and maybe have a finger left over. In the last 18 months, I've talked to six developers, and they talk about the fees set by your board, that I was a member of for a long time. Please, go talk to the policy board that sits there. And I don't know of one that has. I know some have made contact and wanted to speak in front of your board about the fees that you set the policy up. I don't believe any of those got... I don't believe any of those got an audience with the policy board. Commissioner Clay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm glad this is back up on the screens because I had a question about it that we didn't fully discuss all the information that's available on it.
Can you speak into the mic?
If we add together the water connection charge and the sewer access charge in Chocopee and compare it to Chaska, if we add those two together, and if I were Steve Saltow, I'd be thinking, man, I'm glad I'm developing in Chocopee and not Chaska because the total fees in Chaska are a lot higher when you look at both of those together. And Lakeville's not that far behind us or under us.
Water in, water out.
Yeah.
And a fee coming in, fee coming out. I can control, try to control one fee in, right? But then, that's part of it, but.
Talking about topography, what being on a hillside and the other issues we have here for having to drill water wells and pump it up to, you know, higher elevations so it can finally flow downhill. In Chocopee, I wonder if our sewer access or sewer charges are so low because we are able to take advantage of gravity for most of that flowage, which is typically free as opposed to having to use electricity to pump water uphill.
I think the sewer charges are on the agenda for a little later. Just when I look at the previous chart of twenty years of fees and when I look at this charge, you know, I've always said I don't want to be on a list, on certain lists in life, right? Either the list that shows you're too short or the list that says you're too high. This makes, this chart, this chart makes it appear like Chocopee stands out on the high end. Is that an equal apple to oranges comparison? Maybe not, but these are, I did want to point out that these are our city comparable in size, scope, budget that we use both for sewer rates, looking at levies when the levies are increased. So I know in the past, our communities have used neighbors and all our neighbors are not quite like Chocopee, so we tried to have our comps match up closer. Commissioner, or Commissioner Yost.
You know, as I sit here, it always comes to mind when I get into, it seems almost like a negotiation. I guess the, where would you, where do you want them to be?
We're not the policy board.
No, I understand that. And, you know, as a policy board, we look at, and rest assured, this does not come up at one meeting, you know, just like you're, I'm sure you're, through your budget process, you know, it's going to be months and months of meetings, going over the numbers, getting your information, making sure it's all correct and going through it. Mr. Mars, I know you've been through the budget process with the utility. Our numbers are what they are. The costs are what they are. We don't make, we don't go arbitrarily out there and make up a number. We have a fund that's at a deficit and it's been a deficit for a long time. Three, four, five years. And we're trying to get that up. Now, does that mean some of that is borne out by having the five hundred dollar charge? And by the way, that's why that extra bump you see in those two years is that little extra five hundred dollar bump on there to help get that fund back in. Again, we only have so many resources we can use to put money into those funds. Again, we can't transfer funds around. We can't move funds around. We do not have that. So we have to go through the process that we use to collect those funds, which is our trunk water charge and our water access charge. Now, the thing that I would like to know, you know, is what does develop, and again, I've been on the utility board for going to be nine years and I haven't seen anybody at the meetings. I haven't gotten emails. My email's out there, it can be located on the utility website and they'll send it. Any one of us have our names and numbers out there and are free to contact and talk to about any of these kind of issues. We have not had those issues. As you know, and I know Jody was on the planning commission and the comp plan development, you know, that's not a single issue, sit down and do it. It's weeks and months and in some cases, years to go through. And we go through that process all the time to go through this. So our numbers are what they are. This is what we need to make those funds whole. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what number do the developers are telling us that where we should be? Should we be at Lakeville? Should we be at Chaska? Should we be at Blaine? Our costs are what they are. I mean, there's only one way, it's either we subsidize it, as Mr. Meyer pointed out, is we have to go to the ratepayers and say, you need to pay more so we can develop more. So I guess as the elected body, I guess I just trying to figure out, you know, the information we have is the same, it's, you know, the numbers are up, the numbers are down, is where do we want to be? What's a good number? I mean, do we have something to shoot for or not?
Well, it's, this is not a, I don't feel a negotiation. Developmental fees have been written about for the last, forever. And it's affordable housing and big studies over the last nine months, but you're all avid readers as I am and fees and fees and, you know, they, some folks like to point at government. There's a lot of other factors. It's landowners and the cost of land, cost of two-by-fours, shingles, all that. And I do understand that. But fees, years ago, I think our city got sued because of fees. And actually, we had to make some adjustments.
And I was actually involved with that. So was Mr. Lehman.
And recently, there was a Supreme Court case that affected a community and how fees and cities and how that charges. Some of these cities have internal water departments and I don't think water was the point of contention in this suit, but a lot of scrutiny is coming to policy boards that set policy and procedures. And I think, I think we have to do it right. The world has changed and, you know, we were talking about nineteen eighty, you know, pre- Canterbury Downs, you know, forty years, long time, things change, we have to adapt. Forty years ago, the number one retailer of the United States was Sears. They were the Amazon of America. You could go to their stores, you could order through their catalog. They filed for bankruptcy. People need to adapt and in tune and we're not saying we're, we have to be efficient and effective and find a spot that encourages development, orderly development, not lay pipe and have no connects like some other communities have done and then years pass. So that's kind of my spiel on that. Commissioner Lehman?
Couple of things, Mayor. I'm not going to ramble quite as long as he did. The clarification on the lawsuit on fees for the city, if we recall, we actually learned that one side of our fee structure was substantially too low. So just to get that out there, that it's not like we were just massively overcharging everybody. We were actually not collecting what our actual cost were on one side of it. We've got a couple of different things here. First, I want to say that I'm not here to demand anything out of the commission. I thought this is a great learning opportunity, not only for us, but the general public to understand how your operation works, what's paying for what, what your outline costs are, what some of the issues are. And I think it's a great opportunity for everybody to have a bigger overview of the whole system and what it takes to operate it. So thanks for bringing your expertise here. I do appreciate it. But when I'm asking some of these questions, I'm asking because, A, I don't know the answer and I don't know if you do and what other cities are doing. But I think we have a couple of different things happening in Chocopee that actually hurt us. It's not anything we can control. We could possibly control it, but we're not willing to. One of them is when we get these growth spurts that happen, it comes all at once. You've all been here, you've seen it. You get this ramp up, massive growth, 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 and then it dies off. And what happens when that happens is the land costs go up, developers start paying a premium for the land and they say, geez, I paid way too much for this land and now they, they don't want to, it's hard to pay for other things when you overpaid for the land. I get it. And then utilities or the city or the developer have to put infrastructure in and since we're growing gangbusters at the moment, to get the contractors to come in and do some of this work for you, well, it's hard because they're really busy, so now you're paying a premium for them too. And it's almost like, you know, because of the way Chocopee has done this, ramps up, explosion, everything's expensive, the land values go up, the construction costs go up, it's hard to get the construction workers because there's just too much work all at once, so you're paying that for a premium. And then it ramps down. Market fails. So some of the other, that works against us. How do you control that? You say, we're only going to allow this much growth per year, but we don't want to do that because we're limiting ourselves. Lot easier to plan for, lot easier to budget for, you know exactly what you're going to do, kind of like the orderly annexation. It's orderly because you know exactly what you're going to do, two fifty a year, that's So in one case, you got an orderly situation, the other, you just got a kind of a market at, sometimes it's disorderly, but that's what it is. And you just got to work through it. I remember in the early two thousands when we were doing damn near two thousand units a year and staff was just, you know, head was spinning, mistakes were made, rightly so. And, you know, it's, you make hay when the sun's shining, they say as a farmer. Some of the questions I have, I'm asking now because I don't know the answers and it's probably, it's something I really want to know. Do some of these other communities use different materials than other communities? You know, what do you use for a water line? Copper, plastic? I don't know. But does everybody use the same stuff?
Commissioner Lehman, we require, we have policies and procedures and rules and regulations and water policy manuals, what's required. We require ductile iron pipe for water mains and we require copper for plumbing up to an inch and three quarters. If it's two inches or more.
Okay, can I stop you just for a second? Do you know if everybody has to use the same stuff or can other communities use something different? And does that alter the infrastructure cost or charges?
There's some communities, you have to be careful. There's been past practice where materials have been used that have caused big issues over time. One of those you probably heard about, that there was a long period of time where lead services were used. Now, a lot of cities are going to be required to pull those lead out of there because lead leachates causes some serious public health issues. There's also, there was a period of time when asbestos cement water main was used. Well, naturally, you hear the word asbestos and that causes problems. Chocopee has been very lucky that we haven't used those kinds of materials, so we don't have those issues. Something that some communities are moving toward now is to a plastic water main or what they call HDPE. Our commission has had the feeling that we want to stay with a proven material that's been used through the history of our community. We pull up water mains, some of our older ones are cast iron, but we can pull hundred year old water mains out of the ground here and they're in fantastic shape. We don't have tuberculosis that's caused inside of there, we don't have water quality issues to do that. So it's a material that's used very, very well in the way our water mains are constructed into the buried bedrock that's kind of cradled in sand that we have in situations here down by the river. And then it's into dirt, but we have requirements that we go seven and a half feet deep. The commission has made the decision not to consider, except for one slight case where there was some very serious engineering issues, not to use plastic pipe. The feeling is, is that the plastic pipe doesn't have a long enough track record. There's been uncontaminated regulations that will continue to come out of Washington and the EPA. And there's concern, the studies have been shown that there's some leachates of materials that are called phthalates, plasticizing chemicals, that may cause problems long term because of the oxidation or the chlorine that's used in the system too. Our commission has made the decision not to, until there's more information available. The only place that we put in HDPE was connecting a water tower up on Dominion Avenue that comes all the way down to Valley View Road. It's a very steep incline. There were some issues with the topography there that we had to bore to get that water main in. We couldn't do what's called a cut and a fill. We would have damaged, taken out a lot of trees, so the decision was made to bore that in. At that time, there wasn't enough experience to bore ductile iron pipe that there is now. This was close to fifteen, sixteen years ago. So the decision at one time, only we allowed the plastic or the HDP to be used in that situation, but other cities have the opportunity to use that, but our commission has held firm on using materials that have worked well in the long history of this water system.
I just have one follow-up. On the chart that you have, just making sure I'm reading this right, under Prior Lake?
Yes.
If, it says water capacity charge nine thousand and then it's got a unit price and a water tower charge.
Yes.
Unit.
Yep.
Is the top nine thousand, is that what the fee is?
That's what they call, the way they have it, they actually have two things that they identify as a water connection charge. And so I wanted to point that out if people would look at their website or contact them. The one water connection charge is that nine thousand dollar charge. That nine thousand dollar charge is, as they call it, a water connection fee, but it's to a platted property. And as I indicated earlier, whether there's two homes, it's nine thousand dollars, whether it's three hundred homes, it's nine thousand dollars, but it's a flat fee. But they do call it a water connection charge and it is different than something that we would have.
Though, in the case of the, talked about Willie McQuaid's, if they were in Prior Lake, they would be hit with that nine thousand dollar fee?
I'm not quite sure that would be the case.
Okay. And if it wasn't, it would be the other two numbers together?
Yes.
The tower charge and the water connection charge per unit?
Yes.
And then is that unit charge based on the number of sacks?
Sack unit, yes, that's in the far left hand as you can see, the units that cities use are.
So if a use has got four SAC charges determined by the Met Council, it would be multiplied by four?
That's correct.
And I don't know what theirs is, I just use that as an example so that I understand exactly how this is operating.
Thank you. To kind of springboard off of Counselor Lehman's discussion, I want to say I appreciate that Spock uses the quality products. You mentioned the phthalates and those are actually restricted as hazardous substances in Europe now or in the near future. So rather than having to dig up all that stuff and replace it, having that quality product in the ground is good. But has the commissioner of the utility looked at other ways of cost savings in general in ways to try and, you know, collect costs or save costs and save money so that we're not having to charge as much?
I think the commission may agree when we go through the budgetary process and we look at projects, we bid major projects out, we're looking at every dollar that we can. I mean, that's the nature of the beast, that we're trying to be as conservative as we can on any of these costs. We follow formal bid procedures. We look at what those costs are for products. When we purchase materials, and it's kind of a side note, but when we purchase copper cables, say for on the electric side, you know, we're shopping around to trying to get the best price we can. I think the commission will verify that. Our finance director is probably the, has one of the tightest fists of anybody I know that she's really looking at costs all the time and that we constantly are looking at costs that we can take it very seriously.
One thing I'll add to that is if you take a look at a lot of the facilities that Spock has put in, they blend in well with the environment from a city perspective, right? You could look at making more municipal type pump houses and things like that that aren't as aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. We've chosen to fit in, we work with city staff to, especially like with the Benedictine Health Services Development, right, to have a building that blends in, looks nice, right? To have a, have a building that blends in, looks nice, right? Uh, uh, so we, in some regards, maybe we are spending some money there, right? But that benefits the community to have it look that way rather than have, you know, just a stark building that sits there, right? So, and there are things we can look at that way, but, you know, besides that, I don't know that there's a lot that we can be looking at.
Have a cost benefit.
Right. I mean, it's a, it's a pump house, right, in Valley Creek Crossing that looks literally like a house.
Like a house.
You walk past it, you don't even know it's, it's not a house. It's got a driveway to it, it's got windows, right? So, I mean, the, those are some of the things that the commission has done to, to fit in the community better. And I, I mean, past that, I, I don't know what more we could do to, to be cutting costs on some of these projects.
I mean, I can, and one recent example too is the booster station that's being built at the Windermere Development. Uh, we have meetings with city staff on what that design would be like. And the city had some ideas to get, to make that more blend in and kind of, kind of a farm agricultural kind of look to that. So we incorporated those changes in there to where we would agree that it would be a facility that would blend into that area too. So, uh, he is correct that sometimes there are costs to do that. Uh, as you look at, uh, Tank Seven that was just built on Wood Duck Trail, uh, we get an awful lot of compliments on that. And the overall cost of a structure like that is, uh, about two and a half million dollars. But when you look at the small cost to put the sconces in and that pillaring that we have in place, that's kind of a gateway into this community. That's one of the first things you see. And we just didn't want to have a plain, just water storage tank that's painted gray or whatever. We try to, you know, blend in that and take advantage of that and, and make our citizens and our taxpayers kind of proud of our facilities. And, uh, we, uh, are very proud that we keep up a facility once that's built also. I think you'll agree that, uh, we take a lot of pride in, in, in the facilities that we have and we make sure our water towers stay clean and they stay painted. And there's lots of things that go into place on it, so.
Okay. More questions on, um, five B. Kind of a long thoughtful discussion. Thank you. Um, five C, projected plan, uh, uh, water, uh, infrastructure with identified funding streams?
If I may, I'll just start that and if there's more specific questions, we'll go to Joe Adams. He develops a CIP plan. As you can see, this is our, uh, capital improvement plan that is, uh, gone over in detail during our budgetary process and developed for, uh, the years two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three. The two thousand nineteen projects are actually approved by our commission and they're authorized to move forward in those costs. The plan that we have going out from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three are accepted. Uh, we anticipate those projects to be built, but they may change by the year that it's being proposed and whatever. As you see on the very first part, uh, uh, we've talked about this a little bit earlier. Uh, there's actually four funds, uh, that provide, uh, the dollars to run the water department. The first being the operating fund. As you can see under that is there's, uh, system upgrades, advanced metering, infrastructure, vehicles and equipment. And, uh, you see the detail for what miscellaneous products. We can get into that detail. And what the operating fund does is it, it kind of covers administrative costs, the metering, the billing, the, uh, that portion of capital improvement plan, uh, the rates O and M costs and other expenses that are in place. So that's, that's strictly provided by, uh, the rate that our customers pay for water. And we'll get into comparables and what our water rates are. The second fund that we have is a reconstruction fund. And that's based on, uh, replacing infrastructure, which is water mains, appurtenances, fire hydrants, valves, in construction with a street reconstruction project. There's a benefit for us to work together with the city when they reconstruct a street because utilities have to be redone. So we take advantage of using a common contractor and going forward. And that reconstruction fund you see is based out and that's based on, uh, information we receive from the city on what they're anticipating to do on major street reconstruction projects and what our anticipated costs will be. That's a separate fee. That's a line item on a water bill. And that's also based on the amount of water that's used. We've talked, uh, somewhat maybe ad nauseam on trunk water funds and water connection charge, but you see those are the basis on those costs going forward. So as you can see, just in, uh, projects that we have for two thousand nineteen, we're talking, uh, you know, two and a half million dollars going forward to, uh, year five of this. It's adding another seven million dollars. But you see the cumulative water, uh, infrastructure costs going with our CIP plan over the period of the carrier that we have for two thousand eighteen. And the majority of that is the booster station that's being built at Windermere. And you go forward and you see that, and you see that the cumulative total on the water is twenty-five million dollars. It's a significant amount of dollars that it takes to build our system correctly, to have what we call the level A service that, uh, is, is dictated by our commission and going forward. So if there's questions on whether it's wa, water treatment, uh, tanks, water main size, then we can go in, in, uh, in, go in detail, answer questions that we have. We also, also, as I indicated, we just, uh, completed a study by S E H for, uh, comprehensive water system plan. And that's looking at the infrastructure costs that are anticipated to serve ultimate build out of the city. So we've already taken that picture and going forward to, uh, the ultimate build out of the city, take into account potential annexation and dejection townsits. So we looked at those numbers also. But we're more defined in that five-year period on exactly what we think those costs were and how they're being funded. So, uh, with that, if there's other questions, uh.
Questions on their CIP? Okay. Five D, outline of water rates? And this is the rate per thousand?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, uh, address the, the city council. Uh, I'd included an information here as, as our last water rate study was done in two thousand nine, provided by progressive consulting engineers. And with that, uh, increases were set, uh, annually, whether there's an increase or not by our, our commission. I've included a brochure of what our current water rates are to show in detail of how they break down for different classes of customers that we have. It goes by what the fixed charge is. A lot of people don't understand. There's kind of a flat fixed charge that we have in, built in our water rates. And that fixed cost covers the cost that's associated, associated with reading the meter, billing, administrative costs. If a person doesn't use a gallon of water, there's still a cost associated with that account. So that's, uh, factored into this. And then the actual water rate itself funds the O and M costs that we go forward with that. Uh, so i- i- if there's questions on the specifics of our two thousand nineteen water rates or that study, I'd be glad to answer this time. And if you'd like, I can move into a comparison analysis.
So the, I just, uh, I know you got, I know the commission has been very conservative on water rates per thousand over the years. And, uh, we have a chart as well, just of cost comparison cities of water. Uh, you guys are, um, midline compared to everybody else, so that's much appreciated. And I think on this chart on the, these are our comp cities, again, the same cities. And while we look at size of budget, staff, things like that that make up our comp, I will comment that the several cities on the right side are comp cities. However, they are very fortunate to buy water from the, uh, from the city of Minneapolis. And I'm sure the city of Minneapolis is very happy to sell them water. And their water rates are, um, are higher. This is, uh, the cost.
Mississippi.
It is. And, uh, the city of Minneapolis has a, a good, uh, good thing going for the other communities. So, um, when I say that we want to be, when I look at fees for organizations, when I say this, I don't want to be on lists that are down at the bottom. Don't want to be lists that are our way on the top. This is a list where I want to be, right in the middle. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, if I'm reading this correct, on their water charge per thousand gallons, one to five thousand gallons for residential is, I'm going to round it to two dollars and fifty cents per gallon? That's, that's higher than the commercial, for-profit commercial business or a for-profit industrial service. So it almost looks like my house is subsidizing the commercial and the industrial just on the water rate already.
Economy of size, they use a lot more.
So if I use a bunch more, mine actually goes up to two ninety-eight if I use more.
John?
If I may, uh, those numbers are based on what's called a cost of service, cost of service study base extra methodology, which is used and supported by the American Water Works Association. Uh, our consultants use that fee and there's reasons why that's cheaper. It's not subsidizing, it's the actual cost of, to provide that service. So your service that you have with a residential customer is a little bit higher because it has to go to that individual residence and it's not used essentially in one building. So there's associated costs on that. And I'd be glad to provide that study that kind of breaks that, why that is. The one thing that you notice, if I can point out here too, is that we're required by the DNR to have an escalating rate. We used to have a de-escalating rate and our customers were very happy with that. The more you use, the less it costs. The DNR, uh, changed their statute and they wanted to enforce paying more the more you use. Uh, even though we, uh, kind of protested with the DNR that, uh, the water rates in the Minnesota metro area are so cheap, it really won't make it, uh, much of an impact, say as it would in California where rates are significantly higher. The commission made the decision that, that, that we didn't want to penalize our customers in having some of these tiered rates that you see some of these other communities have, where they go from a dollar twenty-eight on the very low end and then go up over five dollars for the exceeding one. Our commission has held fast on that, that we wanted to keep it at just two tiered rates. We have that lower tiered rate because we want to make sure that we don't penalize people that are on, in, smaller users of waters. Say the elderly people on fixed incomes, people that don't use it. So that based is kind of an average water usage, the five thousand dollar, five thousand gallons that we came up with. So that's what's based on that figure.
So is, am I accurate by looking at the fixed service charge? If it's a big user, commercial, industrial or something, and they have a, I don't know, a three or four-inch pipe, their fixed service fee is much higher than a residential?
That is correct.
That's kind of an offset?
It's correct. It can be looked at that way, yes.
All right, I get it.
So when was your last water rate, water base rate done in two thousand nine?
Our last study was done and, uh, was accepted by the commission in two thousand nine. Uh, it was at that time that the consultant recommended, and you may be aware of this, and I know that, I believe that Mr. Yost was on the commission at that point too, that the consultant recommended, uh, a ten percent increase over the period of five years with a five-year period ending in two thousand fifteen. Uh, there was lots of discussion, uh, with the commission. They thought that was, uh, a little bit too much. And so they authorized a ten percent increase just in year one. And they wanted to annually look at the operation funds level to see if an actual increase would be needed. Uh, since that first initial ten percent increase, we've only added two more over the period since two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen. And so there's been a total of a thirty percent increase over that time as opposed to our, uh, consult recommendation of doing a fifty percent increase over a period of five years. Uh, we didn't increase, uh, water rates, uh, this year. But as you may notice, that the, uh, reconstruction fund actually went down. So when you look at our customers, there's actually be, be a savings on their water bill of six and a half percent on resident, or on industrial and about six percent on a residential customer. So their water rates are actually going down this year over two thousand eighteen.
Oh, certainly here on this graph here, if you would have followed that, uh, I know that water consultant, uh, that was, that did that study in the ten percent. And certainly we would have been more on the right of this chart here if that would have been the case. Other questions on our water, the water cost rates?
Before we move on, can we look to the next item? Can we take a short little break?
Uh, we can. Let's try to finish just this agenda item and then we would. Steve?
Uh, Mayor, council members, commissioners, um, I've been here a year and a half and, um, I've been downloading your plans. Your new plan is three hundred and fifty pages. Um, I just got it here in, uh, recently. And, um, there's a lot of information here to absorb. Um, so putting some of these pieces together, uh, being a water manager up in Brooklyn Center for eight years, uh, we just built a water treatment plant. Darren, could I get that graph back up? I was going to actually talk a couple of things, bringing a, a few of these items together, um, that I want to learn more, uh, to make sure that, um, you know, collectively, we're headed in the right direction. And so we talked about apples and oranges, apples and apples. So Shakopee does not have a water treatment plant. Um, some of these communities do, and usually those water treatment plant costs are user fees that would be shown on this chart. So not necessarily apples-to-apples comparison here with a lot of the other cities. Eden Prairie, um, they have a pretty, uh, um, complete water treatment system. And a lot of these other communities that are on, on both sides of the chart do. So it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison here. So I wanted to point that out. And I wanted to, to bring that into the water treatment plant discussion. Um, so prior, when we were looking at the CIP, there's a, a water treatment plant, um, for five point three million dollars. Um, and I heard earlier that that, that might be just a spot water treatment plant for one, two or a couple wells. Um, I also heard that we have, uh, some nitrate issues. I'm not sure which wells there are. There's, there's a, a, a lot of wells in this community. They're spread out. Um, I'm concerned that if we have an issue where we do require water treatment, um, holistically, such as manganese issues, um, there are some emergent changes in the maximum, um, in the MCLs. Um, and that is why we, we, when I worked for Brooklyn Center, why we built a water treatment plant there. Um, and we operate under those same guidelines here. And I was looking for manganese levels across the board with all the different wells. Um, because I, I, I did hear that it was high, you know, recently on the, on the well that was, um, drilled. But on, um, other wells in your comp plan, it sounded like it's known that there are high levels of manganese. So I'm concerned about that. And mostly what I'm concerned about is that we don't have a collective plan here for, uh, for an ultimate water treatment plant, um, because we can't kick that can down the road forever. I don't, I don't think we can here in, in the city of Shakopee. And my concern is this system is not built for a one or two, one or two treatment plant system. And maybe I just haven't seen the right report or study of a water treatment plant. And maybe I'd asked Joe or, Joe or John the comments on. But a water treatment plant for the entire city is going to cost twenty million dollars plus. And right now, what I've seen with, um, we're, working with, with your commission, um, with the staff and what I know about your water system is, your water system with your wells is not set up to accommodate a water treatment plant. And it, and an example would be in, in a lot of communities, they will plum the city, thirty years in the making, thirty, forty, fifty years in the, in the making. We're going to build a water treatment plant right here. So let's, as we develop, we're going to plum all these wells, raw water lines from the wells to this water treatment plant or multiple water treatment plants. Chan Hassan has just done this up there with two newer water treatment plants. I don't see that parallel system in here. So not only does, would this city have the cost of a substantial amount for a water treatment plant, um, but also a substantial amount to plum those raw water lines to a water treatment plant. So I'm concerned that we don't have an ultimate vision to address all those emergent contaminants in the water and our change in requirements from the Department of Health that, that are out there. Um, so I'd like a, I, I, I'd like to learn more on that to, to grow in the confidence with you that we are planning for the future.
I mean, uh, complicated question. I'll, I'll break certain things down. As, as you're well aware of, your iron and manganese, it's, it's kind of fixed within the aquifer itself. So those numbers really don't change a whole lot. And so where I've talked about, we have the balance where we have higher levels of iron and manganese as we go up the bluff line and we go west part of the city. Uh, we have the nitrate levels, which used to be much more of a significant concern back in the early two thousands. Uh, we monitor that. We have a very strict, uh, nitrate monitoring program. And we present those quarterly results and we see the trend line going down for nitrates. It doesn't say it might spike back up again, but we're looking at causes that may have, uh, helped kind of reduce those levels. But we don't see the uptrend that we saw for a period of fifteen years. The iron and manganese, we know that we have, uh, a couple of wells are located on, uh, Dominion Avenue. And with that, uh, we're able to use a blended orthophosphate chemical that sequesters the, the iron and manganese. And what that does, that's a simple way to treat that. It keeps those chemicals in kind of an invisible state. It ties up that molecule to where your rusty water doesn't get rusty for a period of four or five days. And by then your water's using your water system. And it ties up that manganese. It's not the best treatment that we have in place, but it's worked well at those wells for a period of fifteen years. What we've been able to do and we've been pretty successful with is we've kind of lined up our wells along, is that Twelfth Avenue or Seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth Avenue. But we're kind of a little bit of nitrates and a little bit of iron and manganese. So, uh, we always run that risk. I totally agree with you on emerging contaminants. We don't know what's down the line. We followed pharmaceuticals that take place. Uh, we've been involved with the tribe. place. We've been involved with the tribe. They wanted to reuse their water system. They wanted to use water that they treat in their sewer system, recharge aquifer and use that water. But we're downstream from that aquifer and it's very, very concerning because the population demographic that they have at their hotel is a lot of elderly people. Elderly people take a lot of prescription pills. Prescription pills go through that. So some of the studies that they did were looking at these pharmaceuticals, caffeine levels, some of the things that we feel may be down the line. So we were able to be successful in them on postponing that recharge area and they're not looking to that anymore. We're very concerned. So we took a proactive report on being in their technical review committee. But there are things that are going to be out there and we do run that risk, that we would have to build several water treatment plants if some contaminant came out that we see here. We monitor that all the time. I've... Joe was referring to a study that Bonus Stroh and Associates did for us in 2002 and that was looking at a central treatment plant and putting that together. I'd be glad to supply that with you. The costs were exorbitant at that time. So the decision was made not to look at that. But I do agree that there's a risk. I think there's a risk in a lot of water systems and the best fix, depending on what that would be, would be several water treatment plants as opposed to just one major one.
Are you looking, John, to refresh that study? You said from 2002?
No.
The Bonus Stroh study?
Yeah. No.
We're coming up on...
Not at this time.
It just seems like almost 20 years or so on that study.
We don't see anything on the near horizon that would cause us to relook at what those costs. It's a matter of just relooking those costs. The basic engineering study itself was done. It's a matter of just looking at what those costs would be going forward to do that in place.
Ultra Layman?
Most houses have a filtration system in themselves. I'm not sure what they can screen out and can't screen out. I know like the reverse osmosis and stuff like that in people's houses are pretty expensive systems. Is what you're talking about detrimental to the pipes? Because if the end user is cleaning it up, why would you clean it up twice?
Mayor and council members, Layman, I'm actually talking about nitrates. I'm talking about manganese. So what I just heard was it's sequestered in the water, it's not removed. And I would say most people do not have a filtering system in their home. The strong majority do not. So they are drinking that water from the system, unfiltered, untreated, maybe softened. So with manganese, as an example, the Department of Health put a health value guidance on it at 100. See there, 100, I think it's 100 parts per billion, right? And every well in Brooklyn Center had higher levels of manganese above that health guidance value for infants, every single one of them. So it's not on the MCL list that manganese isn't an emergent contaminant. It's a mineral in our water. It's there. It's been there forever. We need manganese. But the health department put a health guidance at 100 parts per million and every single, every single one of our wells were higher than that. So we built a treatment plant up there for that.
Not necessarily because you needed it because somebody else didn't like the standard.
The Department of Health did not have to, but they were saying, we are concerned. We issued a health guidance value on this and you're exceeding it. And that city council made a decision to build one. So that's why I'm concerned here because the water chemistry is from the same aquifer here as up there. And I know it changes, but it's a concern just like nitrates are, to ensure that we are providing not what's required, but what's a better decision for the community to protect our infants that drink that water. And like I say, a majority do not filter that water. So it is, so it's, there's a lot of, it's a lot of managers that it's not an MCL yet, so we don't need to treat it. I'm of a little different philosophy than that. I look at it, there's been a health issue warning released on it. I'm concerned about that. I would not have my granddaughter, who is six months old, drinking that water in those conditions. So I take a little different approach to it. So that's my concern. I need to get more educated. I'm interested in the wells chemistry and more about that.
You have a pretty robust testing...
I can just assure that our manganese levels aren't near those levels. So we'll share all the analysis.
Good. Utility has a very robust testing program.
Yes, yes, we do. And we're concerned to Councilor Layman's point. We get concerned when people put the home treatment in, that a lot of the treatments, they don't maintain those. So they actually can create a problem in a home that they can. So that's why central treatment is much better option for the mass of your community as opposed to relying on all endpoint uses for your customers because that can create issues also. But that's our thought. Thank you.
Can we, I'd like to ask the board to create a policy that allows, you know, gets the information on those testing results to Mr. Lilahog.
I can answer that. We have to file, do what's called a consumer conference report annually. It's required by the Environmental Protection Agency. And we file that and that's sent to all of our customers, I believe it's due first.
That's public information.
It's due first. So all that information is collective there. So that's provided to our customers.
Is that, is that well-specific? Each well and different?
It'll identify certain wells, what is the highest on certain levels, but it's not details of each and every well on the entire list of contaminants, what's required by that. So...
And those reports do not contain manganese either. So that information's not out there.
Is that something that you test for?
Yes. Well, yes.
So if it's not on the reports, is it, so the reports that you're putting up on the website may not include all of the things that you're testing for. So if we can get the test information to the city staff...
There's hundreds, there's hundreds of chemicals that were tested.
Well, I think it should be at least shared. Is that something we can do?
Share with the council or share publicly on the website?
Share with city staff.
Sure.
Steve, thank you on that. Five D, you talked about the water rates. And then I guess there's been a request for a short recess. John?
I was just going to bring up, one thing that I have supplied to the commission is because we did a rate analysis on the water side, so you can see how we compare. I had the planning and engineering department do theirs. In your packet, there's an electric comparison with XL Energy and Minnesota Valley. So you can see how we compare to those two. So I know that we were barely touching on the electric side of things, but that's included. If there's questions on that, we'd be glad to answer those questions.
Thank you. Councilor?
Motion for a 10-minute recess.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion. Stand in recess for 10 minutes. President?
Make a motion for a recess.
We'll reconvene this City of Shakopee City Council meeting, joint meeting with the Shakopee Public Utilities, for March 12, 2019.
Reconvene the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission joint meeting with the City of Shakopee for March 12, 2019.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, please talk into your mics. The acoustics here are not the greatest and I received word that people aren't able to hear, especially the commission, so if you could please bring them close and that way we can... The feedback problem we have is because we have so many mics, so I apologize for that as well.
Thank you.
All right, moving ahead to 6A, a presentation by John Fruch similar to the Shakopee Chamber Commerce Public Policy Committee.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I provided the presentation that was made to the Public Policy Committee of the Chamber of Commerce. It was right before our meeting, commission meeting that was held on the 3rd of December, where about two hours before the meeting was held, I received a call from Brad Tapke, concerned about some increases on the water connection and trunk water charge that were in the packet. And he expressed some concern on what he felt those increases were. I explained to him that about the engineering news record plus a 2%, that actually it was a 5.4% increase for the water connection charge. And then the trunk water charge was the same 5.4%, but an additional $500. So we discussed that and he seemed to be fine. I have not heard from him since. It's about 20 minutes later, I received a call from Angie Whitcomb, the executive director from the chamber, with the same exact questions about concern that our rates on the trunk water charge were almost doubling and some of the numbers I really couldn't understand trying to answer that. It was during the... I provided the same information to Ms. Whitcomb that I had provided to Brad Tapke. And it was during that discussion, she says, you know, "This is good information. Would you be willing to meet with our public policy?" Because they were having some similar discussions with that committee. And I, right off the bat, said, "Sure, just let us know when it is." And so we had rescheduled that meeting, so trying to figure out where this information was coming from. So on the 11th of December, we met with the Public Policy Committee. It was myself, it was Joe Adams, and our finance director Renee Schmidt. And we provided the information. I provided the agenda in your packet here to see what was being talked with the... Shakopee Public Utilities Commission was presenting their information. And then after that, there was other agenda items there. We left after we gave our presentation. But in that, I provided here, and it's kind of just regurgitation of things we've talked about over the last couple of hours, is just the different funds that we had and the philosophy that went behind those funds. And describing what we considered to be Level A service, I provided that information here. And then the policies each behind each one of those connection charges. They appreciated that information. I also used the same water connection charge and trunk water charge analysis that was provided in your packet with the surrounding communities, and that was provided at that meeting too. Our portion of the meeting, and then I also provided what the last 10 years of what our fees had gone up on both sides of both the trunk water charge fees and the water capacity, water connection charge fees were. Discussion and answering questions went on for probably about an hour or so. We were thanked for our presentation and we thought it was of value. I haven't heard from Ms. Whitcomb or any members of the Public Policy Committee since then in regards to that presentation. So I thought it was important that I make this same exact presentation to my board, the commission. And we did that at the first meeting in January. They're very much appreciative. We didn't have a second meeting in December, so that's why there was a lag between the city... I'm sorry, the chamber presentation and the commission presentation. It was the first opportunity to do that. The commission thought that was valuable information and made a request that we make the same presentation before the city council. And that's why I provided the information here. So if you'd like me to go into any other details on that meeting, I'd be glad to. But it's, we've kind of covered most of that information here, so...
You haven't received any feed, much feedback from that meeting?
I have not heard from Mr. Tapke since that phone call on the 3rd. And I haven't heard from Angie Whitcomb or any member of the chamber or the Public Policy Committee since that meeting.
Questions? Nate?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just a layman in these areas and so I've been trying to put together my thoughts on it. And trying to understand, if I were to distill your policy on the WAC charges, the water access charges down to the new developments or new uses are going to pay for new infrastructure. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And when I look at your capital improvement plan, you have about $25 million in new capital improvements over the course of the next five years. Is that also true?
That's in the five-year CIP, yes.
Okay. And based on earlier conversation, it sounds like there's about $11 million in known water access charges that are coming in over the course of the next year or two?
That will be hard to anticipate what future development brings and what kind of...
My understanding is it's about $8 million for DR Horton, $6 million...
Horton was $8 million, Dorn was four, the two downtown sites was about $1.2 million.
Horton's figures they gave to us included the trunk water charges. The Dorn development does not include trunk water charges.
That is correct. I stand corrected, the Horton was both.
So over the next year or two, there's what roughly? Am I correct? Michael, you've got a calculation on this, about 11, 12 million? And presumably over the course of the next three years following, there's going to be another $13 million in revenues based on your calculations? And that's how you came up with the, this is the infrastructure that's needed?
Quite sure if I'm following that. The infrastructure that's required comes from our consultant on what's going to be required to serve that potential development and help to build out in the city.
Okay. So I guess my question is, when, for example, the DR Horton project is finished, is that area where they are, that contiguous area, going to be fully served? Or is it also going to be prepared to serve all of the areas downstream from that?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, that was kind of covered the way the system kind of blends together and what Joe Adams had presented. If you'd like to have him come up to that. I think the question is...
I'm just trying to...
No, and you're leading, and your question is leading what the actual policy is on the water connection charge and why it's... I mean, I can read the actual policy itself if you would like. I'm not quite sure where we're going with this.
Where I'm trying to go is, your revenues that you're projecting are all new development and that lines up with the $25 million in the capital improvement plan? Okay.
$25 million of it is out of operating. $25 million for 19 million.
Okay. All right, I'm not going to be able to get around to my question as I'm a layman.
If I may, this was one of the reasons why the commission had asked that. If we got into a lot of financial detail, that we asked for a postponement of this when our finance director would be available to go into fund levels and those kind of things. So I'm not so sure I'm that prepared to answer that question with the information I have available here. But we'd be glad to bring that up when our finance director can present that information. And so I...
No, I understand that.
If I'm following the question, I may be just confused.
Right.
I'm trying to see where revenues or projected revenues line up with projected expenses. Because I don't have a good handle on that yet. And I'm also trying to see where your existing fund balance plays in, because you have about $18 million in cash sitting in your fund balances on the water side.
Yeah, and I'd like to have our finance director address those questions. I don't have that information.
I have a note here that I wrote down prior to, and I know that today we were going to talk about policy and procedure and water connection charges and water trunk. And I, we knew that your finance director wasn't here. But one of my ideas that I thought of last week was, after you get your year-end audit here in the next month or two or so, and maybe this summer we would have, I was going to suggest a joint meeting to follow up on what we've learned and called and disseminated here today.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Council members and Mr. Burkett, you know, I sort of got the gist of what you were getting at. And I think it's important to understand, you know, it's not a one-to-one comparison when you were talking about, you know, water capacity charges. There might be some short-term infrastructure and then long-term infrastructure, especially when, as you suggested, you're not talking about just the development that is at issue, but developments further on. And I believe the area that you're talking about, you know, there is contemplation of, you know, in conjunction with the booster that was put in, the booster station, that there would also be a tank that would be put in later on to further support not only the development that is completed, but future development further on. So it's sort of a rolling capital investment using those water capacity charges. But some of it may be devoted short-term and some of it may be devoted longer term when you're talking about, you know, the aggregation of the additional capacity required for not only that development, but other developments in the area.
John? More questions? Do you have more to present?
If there's other questions on that presentation, otherwise if we want to move to the next agenda item.
Okay, were you going to, no further questions on that one? Do you want to touch on 6B? I know that a lot of this was in your packet.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, typically at these joint meetings too, we've kind of gone over services that are provided by the utilities to the city and agreements that we have going forward. I know there's two new members of the city council, so hopefully they haven't felt inundated by all this information that they're actually learning a bit about this. But what I've included here is besides what we call a cash contribution or the pilot fee, payment in lieu of taxes that we pay the city, there's other things that we do and I'd like to point those out if you would let me. The first attachment that I have with the memorandum is the payment in lieu of taxes and free services to the City of Shakopee. We've done since the year 2000 going forward. And as some of you may be aware, that 2.71% of revenue generated from electric sales is contributed to the city. And on the water side, it is a large number. 23.77% of water sales revenue is contributed to the city. And those are listed under the columns here, the pilot electric transfer and the pilot water transfer. As you can see, that number has grown accordingly so with the development of the city and the rapid growth that we've had. So you can see into 2018, were the last actual numbers, that a little over $1.3 million from the electric fund was contributed to the city. On the water side, it was about $1.1 million. And then in free service, it's calculated out to be about $171,000. And that free service is what we provide to the city as far as maintenance of the streetlights, also electricity that goes to the street lighting. We donate that to the city, so that makes up a majority of that. The one thing I'd like to point out that you see in 2018, where the maintenance of streetlights number goes up significantly from the $135,000 in 2017 to 2018, is that we completed in the year 2018 a complete conversion of the street lighting in the City of Shakopee from sodium-powered bulbs to LEDs, which is the knowing thing. And with that, we think it's a benefit to the city and to the utilities. The cost of the electricity goes down, the maintenance on that type of fixture goes a lot less. And plus, there's studies that are shown that that type of lighting, the white lighting as opposed to kind of the yellow lighting, is advantageous to the citizens of the community too. So that was quite an effort that Greg Drapp with the Electric Department did to get that all completed this year. But with that, we see when we total the pilot costs and the free service and maintenance of the streetlights, you see since the year 2000, that is almost $39 million, which we feel is significant.
I have a question on this. The City of Shakopee, I've always said, is pretty thankful for those dollars from the utility. About 10% of our, roughly of our tax levy, so much appreciated. But I know that Chaska is a wholesale power distributor in the same organization that Shakopee Utilities is, right, the MMPA?
They buy their wholesale power from the same agency as we do. They're not a wholesale provider.
They provide, they provide power to their community?
Yes, and they buy the wholesale power from MMPA.
Okay, I said that. So they pay a pilot to their community as well?
I believe that they do. I don't know what that rate would be.
You don't know?
No, I do not know.
Okay. Counselor White?
No, I, I think that's great that we've changed over to LED. Has there been any studies on the cost savings? Because you provided, provide the electricity too.
That's correct.
So have you looked at what you'll save on that?
Joe, we've looked at those studies.
They save approximately 40% of the energy costs.
So in two or three years, it should pay?
About seven-year payback.
Seven-year? Okay, that's great.
Other questions?
If I could, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, you know, as you are aware, I've only been on the commission for a year and, you know, unfortunately, I never really sat in on the process or understood the process, utilities or the billing or the rates or whatever. And having sat on the commission at this point in time, I mean, I... And having listened to the council meeting in December where there was, you know, a rather frank discussion about development and the tools that the city council has in order to encourage development within Shakopee. You know, it occurred to me that with these remittances, the approximately $2 million, you know, at this point, you know, that's remitted to the city. You know, if the city is looking for something to put in their toolbox for development, especially if it's targeted towards something dealing with the utilities, that would be an appropriate purpose for those funds. You know, I guess, you know, without some sort of a dedication for those funds, you know, let me put my citizen hat on, you know, because I am a citizen of Shakopee, obviously. You know, sometimes taxes are just hidden fees. You know, and fees, you know, somehow, you know, avoid scrutiny as such if they are not specifically dedicated to some particular purpose, you know, connected to the fee or to the usage from which they are generated. So, you know, if what has brought us here today is the fact that, you know, that there is a hindrance in economic development because of the various charges, you know, that are imposed by SPUC. And again, I refer back to my previous discussion, you know, we're dealing with a fixed amount here. You know, if it's not paid by the developers, it could be paid by the users, the citizens of Shakopee. So it just seems either, you know, if that $2 million stayed within Shakopee or within SPUC, that could be used to defray costs overall of the WAC and trunk charges. Or if it needed to be targeted, you know, such as you proposed doing with the SAC, funds that you had available when approached by the developer for Willie McCoy's, then you would have that in your toolbox to use in order to defray costs. Because you can, as a city council, pick winners and losers. You can pick who you want or who you want to encourage to come to Shakopee. You know, Willie McCoy's, because apparently so many people are asking for Willie McCoy's. Or you cannot. But me as a commissioner and my oath as a commissioner, I hesitate to favor one particular party over another. For one thing, you know, as a commissioner on SPUC, I may have a different version of winners and losers than the city council does.
Well, hopefully we all pick winners, that's all I...
Well, when I go to the track, I pray, but you know, it never works out. But anyway, I just wanted to raise that as an issue. If what brings us here today is economic development and especially targeted economic development and the hindrance that the SPUC fees has on that, that might be a way of approaching this so that we can work in tandem. But you, as a city council, is picking the winners and the losers.
Counselor Whitey?
I appreciate your thought there, but you set the rates. The payment in lieu of taxes is, well, we could, you know, we used to collect this as a city public utility, but then we switched it off to the private public utility, you guys. So if you're suggesting that we take it out of the funds that the public utility pays to the city, that doesn't make sense to me because you are setting the rates and the fees and the infrastructure charges. So the taxes, if we charge taxes instead of this payment in lieu of taxes, it would be the same thing, you know.
May I ask, Mr. Mayor? I mean, this all comes from the citizens of Shakopee. So you would tax the Shakopee Public Utilities on the services provided to us by, or provided to the citizens of Shakopee so that those funds will go into the general fund and thereby avoiding, you know, putting the word "tax" on the revenues that you're putting into the general fund. I mean, it doesn't make sense, you know, why you would tax SPUC and the services we provide to the citizens of Shakopee because we all work for the same people, the citizens of Shakopee.
Well, you're collecting the water that flows underneath the city of Shakopee. You're using the right-of-way of the city of Shakopee. You know, I don't see how, I don't follow. I'm sorry.
Different programs have different pilot programs of different percentage. The city of Chaska I just asked about, I don't know what their formula is. They transfer about a little over $8 million to the city from their utility. But I think when we were talking about one developer and trying to pick winners, we gave a developer some help on his land. And later he came back and asked for relief on some utility fees. We don't regulate those. You are the policy board there. We asked that developer to go in front of you. Have we helped that developer prior to that? Absolutely. But he's asking for relief from a policy not set by this board. And that, we've asked those developers to come in front of your board. And how many of them have? Right? I know this. I've sat on this board. No one comes. It's unfortunate for a public utility not to hear about those things, though. But Mr. Lehman?
Mayor, I'm trying to, we seem to move ahead to 6C prematurely without finishing 6B.
All right.
So let me finish 6B so that we can just move right on into 6C, which is where we're already at. To finish 6B, services provided by the, to the city from SPUC. Sanitary sewer billing and collection. Storm sewer billing and collection. Space for billing inserts. Commercial and industrial cross-connection control program, which I don't know what that is. Use of SPUC equipment. Use of state conservation funds for qualifying city projects. Water for fire department training exercises. Directing the city Christmas tree and decorations. Streetlight maintenance, streetlight relamping. Electricity for streetlights. What's commercial industrial cross-connection control program?
John?
There's a couple of things I'd like to point out, but first of all, I'll answer that. In the plumbing code, there's a requirement when you have cross-connections from, say, a business that would be connected to the rest of the city system. Say you had, let's say, a dentist or something that has equipment that uses water and they set one of their pieces of equipment in a bowl of water that's connected to a drain and then it's also connected to the water supply itself. If there was to be a sudden loss of pressure, if it would fall below 20 PSI or 20 pounds per square inch, there's a backflow that can happen. So it can actually suck the water out from that business into our system. So there's regulations, what's called RPZ or reduced pressure zone, equipment that protects the rest of the general water system that we have to the business use. Another good example is if you have a fertilizing company and they have those big bins on the backs of their trucks and they need to fill it with water, they can take a hose or whatever and just fill it in. If that water's, that hose is actually in that fertilizer solution and there's a loss of pressure with a main break or whatever, they could suck that fertilizer like back into our system and cause horrible problems. So there's regulations that the state says are plumbing codes that has. We actually take care of that. That was, it's a city plumbing responsibility to do the black flow checking and make sure that they're rebuilt every five years, that they're expected anything. We worked with the city over the last many years, probably 15 years, that we have offered to take that program over. So we have a defined program that's in place where we send letters out to customers reminding them that it has to be annually tested. We keep all the records from that. We also make sure that every five years they have to rebuild that system too. We've just found out too that the state appears to be changing the methodology that they may be testing RPZ uses on irrigation systems and houses. So the checking of that is going to probably increase exponentially. But we're finding out that some of the language with the state is changing in that it goes from the city to the water supplier. So it's kind of a natural evolution that we're going to take all that responsibility. We've done that in the past. I'd also like to point out the first two things, sanitary sewer billing and collection and storm sewer billing and collection. The city does pay us to do that for them, but in looking at our costs, it's, we lose a little bit of money to do that, but we actually are reimbursed those costs for that. We think that's fair. But we provide that service to do that, but the city does pay us to do that. So I want to point that out then.
And we also pay for the inserts.
Yes, I just say the space for the inserts. So if you request inserts, we make sure that it's available for on the schedule that our marketing and a customer relations director works with. But we change that policy. We used to do it for free and we charge now. It's minimal.
All right. Okay. And we kind of did get in to 6C. Mr. Reynolds, did you have your comment earlier? No? Okay. So we've kind of, we've discussed the economic development efforts, John?
Yes, if you'd like me, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Once again, if we look back at the past agendas on joint meetings, economic development is always there. There's always a good discussion that we have back and forth. The concern back in 2015 is that, we looked at this in detail with our board. I was actually sent to some conferences on economic available opportunities for electric systems, municipal electric systems. And I reported back to the commission at that time that we actually, there's a lot of things that we do that people may take for granted that we do in supplying economic development opportunities for the commission. And we've kind of talked about the first one that I have on the list here, and that's contributions that we make to the city. We believe helps in the economic development effort. We mentioned before also that we have energy efficiency programs that we provide for residents and businesses in Shakopee. We're required by state statute that we have to spend 1.5% of our electric revenues into programs that have us save 1.5% of our annual electric usage. In business, that doesn't make any sense that we have to spend, in our case, we spend $800,000 a year to have our revenues go down by 1.5%. But we're mandated by the state to do that. Unfortunately...
Counselor Lehman, you talk about government getting in the way.
Unfortunately, we do a very...
It's a state mandate that they spend money so customers buy less of your widgets.
That is correct.
I've always found that to be, in the world of conservation, just crazy, but...
Would that be like the LED lighting?
LED lighting, and there's all sorts of custom programs that we have with variable speed drives, retrofits that we have in place. There's some multitude of programs that's available. If you'd like to go in detail, we have our customer relations and marketing director here can go in detail, but it's all on our website. The problem is, is that we do too good of a job, so we don't save 1.5%. We actually do almost 2%. If you look at our track record, we've been given kudos for our program is so successful that we don't spend the entire 1.5% of the dollars required. We carry that over so that money, because we do an efficient job. So we're somewhat unique, so we're proud of that program that we have. Once again, we've talked about the low rates that we have, the excellent reliability we have both on the water and electric side. For example, on the water side, Mr. Lillahog may want to address this, but it's pretty typical in a winter season that a water system would have several main breaks a year. Some cities, the city I used to work at, would have over 100, and that was a constant problem. The way our system is constructed, that I talked about before, into the bedrock and layered and seven and a half feet down so we don't have freezing and boiling problems, we have an average of one a year. We haven't had one this entire winter. We've had some service issues on water service, but we don't have main breaks in this town. It's really, really remarkable. On the electric side, Mayor Maher's going to attest to this. We have our reliability report presented to our commission annually, and our reliability is a series of nines. It's .99997%, which goes to show you that it's very rare to have electric outages in this town. When they do happen, it's usually in a small located area, but we have an excellent reliability in place. Next item I'd like to point out is that our portfolio, the energy portfolio that we have with our Minnesota Municipal Power Agency is who we buy our wholesale power from. I sit as a chair on that agency, and with that, we've had no exposure to coal over the last 15 years. Decisions were made 20 years ago that we wanted to get away from coal and fossil fuel things. So decisions were made at that time that our portfolio now does not have any coal exposure. Those issues are very important to the large companies that come here. When Amazon was citing here, they request information from us. What is your portfolio? What is your anticipated renewable portfolio going to look like in the future? What is the trend of your electric and your water rates over time? So they can see over time, they can anticipate what those rates are going to be. So that's very important information. We have a very good track record of our water rates and our electric rates going up very low and incrementally year over year. The next thing is, the decision was made by our power agency to build the Shakopee Energy Park. It was awarded the 2017 Chop Generation Plant in North America. It's remarkable. I've spoke at several national conferences on the ability to build a power plant in the middle of a town and not have any NIMBYs or people protesting that. It's a remarkable facility, remarkable facility. We still have a lot of people that don't even know what it is because it fits right in there. And with that, that was an $85 million project. We use local contractors. Greystone Construction built the facility itself. We thought it was important to use local contractors in that. We thought that was a big benefit to the economy. And with that, we're protected from issues when you hear about the grid going down or cyber attacks on the high transmission grid. We have ability, without electricity, we can start that plant up and we can produce 40 megawatts of electricity, which could power the majority of this town in situations that we have. So that's also important for incoming business to know, especially data centers to know that we have that kind of facility. The next item is, once again, with our agency, that there's a commitment that was just made. By 2025, our agency will be 100% renewable. That's remarkable. You're hearing in the news now that Governor Walz is talking about 100% renewable. By 2050, we'll beat that by 25 years. The next thing is the benchmarking that we do with our utilities. American Public Power Association has what's called an RP3 designation. For the last two submittals, we've had a perfect score. With that perfect score over the last six years, our rating is the top designation and we're considered to be in the top 5% in the entire nation. We also provide water and electric infrastructure ahead of current development. As we talked about, we're pursuing property acquisition to build a water storage tank and a well ahead of the Windermere development where other developers will know that there's capacity in place that they can go forward. The next thing on the water connection charge, we have a policy, and then we did this with Willie McCoy's. We actually contacted them before the first of the year so they wouldn't have the increase of our 5.4% on that, that we have a three-year payment program, interest-free on water connection charges, that helps a lot of smaller businesses that have trouble with those kind of dollars. And then finally, there's lots of individual efforts that the utility takes on to reinforce our system. Jennifer Lane, we put water main pass that system at our cost to help the development of that area. We're doing some water main looping with RAR molting to reinforce our system there that we're incurring the costs in that. So there's a lot of individual efforts that we have on small communities. So we'd like to think, are we in the economic development business? We are. We are. With that, I could kind of go on and on, but in the presentation, it's getting late.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. I just want the citizens to know and the council to know is that the best people that we have to help with water and electric issues are sitting here in this room, and they are accessible. They're there every day. They take phone calls, they answer emails, they have great ideas. There's a lot of things that most of us don't, we don't really care about variable drives and different things like Jack J. You probably know what that is, but...
I do. You'd be surprised.
I mean, but we have programs for that. We have lighting rebates. We have all kinds of different things that are out there that these people know about, and they are out here to help. And a great asset to our community, the entire SPUC staff that's over there, they're here to help people as best they can, from doing their bills to finding rebates, to finding problems. If you have a water issue, they'll help you deal with that, they'll help you with electric issues. So feel free to use the staff. And the same thing is true with city staff. You have issues or you have questions or comments, ideas, they're right here. They're the people that are doing the water, they're the people doing electricity, and honestly, from sitting on this board, they're our experts. So it's the people that we rely on on a daily basis.
Mr. Meyer?
I just wanted to add to those comments. I recall watching the City Council meeting back in December, and there was some suggestion that the SPUC staff was somehow withholding information and similarly that the commissioners were unaware of apparently what was going on. I can tell you quite emphatically, one, staff does not withhold information. We are fully informed, we are kept informed. And two, we adhere to our commitment to this organization by being informed and by being aware. So I just wanted to dispel any statements of the contrary.
That's a big concern of mine too, that the staffs are working together and the free flow of knowledge back and forth, the free flow of information. And you bring up a good point because you guys just did a water comprehensive plan that was not brought to the city for comment. So I disagree with your comment. The information was not passed back to the city.
John?
Mr. Mayor, I've been aware of some of the emails that have gone back and the information in regards to this. I received an email from the city administrator just several weeks ago that had been brought to his attention that we had supplied information to the Met Council and the DNR without sharing with the city. It went as far as that the city administrator had sent an email to the agencies, the Met Council, and also the DNR stating that they had not seen the water supply plan. There's two different items that we're talking about here. There's a water supply plan and a comprehensive water system plan. I've shared several emails with the city administrator trying to explain what that is. The water supply plan, which is what's required by the Met Council to be included in the 2040 comp plan, is a requirement that we have also. We started working on that plan in 2016, and we worked on that throughout 2017. I have emails that talk that there was conversation and meetings between our consultant, Chad Katzenberger with SEH, and with, I don't believe he's working here anymore, but Eric Weiss, who was a senior planner with the city, thanking for the meeting, supplying information going back and forth. So to say that there was no interaction on the water supply plan, I believe, is incorrect. It was also said that we did not share the information, that this water supply plan had not been seen by city staff until just recently. I received an email from the city engineer, and in that email, it's stating that he had requested some information because, I can share the email with you, stating that the water supply plan, he requested to get that because that needs to be worked into the city's 2040 comp plan, and that he thought that there was some interaction taking place between the city's comprehensive consultant that was somewhat lacking. And so that Mr. Lillahog wanted to take the bulls by the horns, so he asked for the water supply plan. He asked that on the 5th of December. I said I would... for the water supply plan. He asked that on the 5th of December. I said I would get that information to him. I sent that information, the water supply plan. I have an email verifying that it was sent to him on December 12th. I received an email from Steve thanking me for the information, requesting that some information was a little too large to send, so we worked on sending our wellhead protection program, which is a big document. So, to say that there was no interaction with the city or that we didn't share that water supply plan, I take exception with that. The reference to the Water Comprehensive Plan, we have to do that to look forward. That's a document that we use in the guide. The water supply plan is something that we're required to submit to the DNR. We had a deadline to submit that. It's a ten-year plan, a deadline to submit that by October 15, 2017. We submitted that on time, and unfortunately, in emails that I shared with the city administrator, as in past programs and past submittals that I have been part of, that it takes several years, unfortunately, for the DNR to supply comment on that. And it was at that point that we reached out to verify that the DNR had not approved that water supply plan yet. And that part of the process that takes place is, a DNR approves the plan, sends it to the Met Council, the Met Council makes their comments, goes back to the DNR, the DNR sends a letter of approval. We've received a letter of approval from the DNR with the Met Council comments, and we've had conference calls with the Met Council. And in that letter of acceptance, they're thanking us for a job that was well done. It was at that time that the information was just recently released, but we have records to show that we had to submit that plan in 2017, and we had to wait till there. So, there may be some confusion on the difference between the water supply plan and the comprehensive water plan. I've sent emails to the city administrator in trying to work out the difference between those, and offered to send the information there. We have hiding it in no way. To say that we're in a back room developing these things is absolutely inconsistent the way we run our business. And we supplied the water supply plan according to the regulations that we have, and according to protocol that we've done with the last two ten-year water supply plans.
Here's what I'm going to ask, and I'm going to ask the board to make this a policy, that planning documents get shared with the city before they're approved, you know, especially the comprehensive plan. That's something that the city of Shakopee shares with all of its neighbors to have a comment period on. Prior to...
I'm sorry, that's not correct.
I have a floor now. Prior to submitting to the Met Council. We do that. We do that, and you might not have to, but you guys are the Shakopee Public Utilities. I expect that shared information. You know, I think that that's the part that really bothered me, that, you know, we're not sharing that information. And you can say that everything's, you know, crystal clear and wide open, but I'm not seeing it. And maybe, maybe staff, and I don't care what the difference between the DNR plan and the comprehensive plan is, I think we should be at least sharing all the plans, so that everybody is on the same page.
Mr. Maher?
Okay, Counselor Whiting, I would note that the example that you cited does not dispute at all the statement that I made about the commissioners being informed and knowledgeable regarding their duties and the operations of Spuck, and two, that the Spuck staff does not withhold information from us or mislead us regarding the information we use for our policy decision purposes. What you brought up is a point that we will take up, and this is something that, I don't want to jump ahead, but I do have a number of issues I want to discuss about the relationship between our two bodies, and that is one of them that we will consider. And I don't think that there has been any effort to withhold things that has been requested. I think whatever you request is available. What you're talking about is not proactively, you know, sharing that beforehand, and that was unfortunate, but there was no ill will or attempt to conceal anything in that. It might have been an oversight in the rush to get it in. I'm not familiar with the circumstances of it, but I stand by my previous comments and want to address those specifically because they were brought up in the meeting in December, which I thought was unfortunate in the way it was. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, and commissioners, I would like to say that when you submitted your DNR drinking water plan, that the city got a response from them, that it was approved, et cetera, et cetera. I'm looking at it right now because it's unique. So, I wanted to kind of capture the uniqueness of this. What they said was, through approximately 140 water supply plans in the South District of DNR Region 3, all but three of those plans were written by city staff. So, it's unique. It's not a common relationship. So, I knew personally there was a drinking water plan that was to be done. I requested that specifically. I knew it was part of the Comp Plan. What I didn't know, that you guys were doing, hired SEH for a Comp Plan update, which was a 350-page plan that should have been in sync with the city's Comp Plan. I didn't know about it. It was not shared. We were not involved. You don't just create a 350-plan in a day. So, there was no coordination with that plan. So, I didn't ask for it in the sense that I did not ask for your Plan, Comp Plan, from SEH that you did, because I didn't know about it. So, I asked for everything. I asked for rate studies. I asked for your wellhead protection plan. I asked for your drinking water plan. I asked for all of this. But the key thing sitting on top of all of this, just so you know, to put this into perspective, is your master plan, is your Comp Plan, the long-term plan. I didn't see that until after everything. And, you know, yes, it may have been coordinated with Eric, who's no longer here, as part of the planning department, but I feel compelled, as being a city engineer, and the uniqueness of this situation, to be involved, to sync all the services together, because they are. Our stormwater, our surface water that goes into the groundwater, our sanitary sewer, our drinking water, I feel it all needs to be in sync. And right now, it's not. I've been working here a year and a half, and there's a lot of things not in sync, including on the electric side with working with other utilities. So, we have been reaching out. I have been trying to educate, and we do need to work better, because it's reflected in our development community as well. It's clunky. That's how I would describe the relationship with city staff and Spuck, as well as with Spuck and a lot of the other utility companies and developers. It's clunky. And we need to get better collectively, because it honestly gets embarrassing to me sometimes to be part of it. So, I appreciate the initiatives, but we need to work better together.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, we can all agree as we move forward, that there's going to be a lot more free flow of information, because for whatever reason, that has not occurred. John, I appreciate what you said, but we have not received the information that we think that we should have at least been able to discuss with you. That's 98 percent of our problems. And so, if we can continue to work on that relationship when it comes to the free flow of information, because we want you to have the information you need, just like we need the information that we need to do our job from you. So, let's really look forward. We understand that there's been some bumps in the road in the past, but we've got to move that forward and understand that this is a relationship, and it's historically been a bumpy relationship between city staff and Spuck. And, you know, knowing that, we've got to double our efforts to try to figure out a way to fix that.
And if I may, and something that I think that we can build on, too, is, in the email that I referenced from Mr. Lilahog, he began that email saying he thinks it's a good idea that we start meeting regularly. And that email was shared with Joe, and we would like to do that. We would like to have regular meetings. You know, some of the meetings that we have are more in a business sense, of the DRC meetings that we have people back and forth. But I'm 100% behind having meetings to do that. I understand there's been bumps to the road. I want nothing more for us to work together in the future. Once again, you know, we've been at this a long time. We take things for granted or whatever. Some of your staff is relatively new just over the last several years, and it's kind of...
I would say the majority of my staff at the department level is new.
And we want to do that. I'll bring that up with our board, and we can go forward with that. So, I appreciate both of your comments.
Terry, I know you want to speak.
I'll be brief, because it's very much what everybody else said. You have a lot of new staff. We have people on this commission that have been with the old staff for a long time in the way that they did it. It's a big change. Your staff has to reach out. Our staff has to reach out. Mr. Lilahog, I knew Mr. Looney very well, and a lot of the questions and things you bring up, Bruce never brought up through the time. So, this is a new interaction for us, having that from Bruce. Bruce came to many of our meetings, talked with them all the time. And I'm not saying it's negative or positive. I'm just saying it's different. And we will work with it, and our staff, I'm sure, will work with it as well.
I've been around a long time, too.
Yeah, I know you have.
The relationship between the city and the utility has been par at best, regardless of leadership, regardless of staff. We've been through changes here. You've been in changes there. Commissions have changed. The relationship has to improve. Actually, when I was on the commission and we would review our president, I believe it was one of our goals to improve the relationship. And that actually extends prior to John's tenure as well. Communication, working together, really want the same things. We want a prosperous, growing community that runs well, that has good infrastructure, that doesn't break. But we got to find the, we got to, we're not aligned. We're not together, and we need to work on that, all of us. Whether it's policy board to policy board, leadership and staff together, that's the way to go. Counselor Layman?
I'll be the odd guy out. I've never had a problem working with Spuck, whether it was Lou Van Houtt or Mr. Crooks. I've just never had that problem. I think what's happening, what's changed is, Spuck has always looked at their water and their electricity as their priority, and rightly so, is your responsibility and your priority. The city has changed substantially in the last, how many years, from where it started in 2002 with me. As Mr. Reynolds said, most of the staff are new. They're doing things much different than they've been done before. Some of it, I'm not even aware of. Doesn't mean it's right or wrong. It just means that they're off on their own way, doing what needs to be done to run a community. And you're not aware of it? I'm not aware of it. Some of the public ain't aware of it. They have different motives, different priorities than what past has had, staff members have had, or what the community may have had. And there's enough blame to go both ways. This isn't just, is not just a Spuck issue. The city's got a different motive and different direction. It's incumbent upon them to tell you, and the public, and council, and everything else, what they're thinking. So, you know, I'm sitting here listening to all this, and it's almost like a beat-up session, which is mature at best, and it shouldn't be. It's reality. Reality is, we have different priorities, different direction, different motives than what we had just six years ago. And I don't know how anybody's supposed to grasp that off the top of their pillowcase at night. So, it's a two-way deal. I totally don't accept perception that we're, what I'm hearing is, this is all your fault. That's, I just don't accept that. It's not your fault. You're doing exactly what you're supposed to be doing, and that's looking out after water and electricity. If we're over here going this other direction, that's our prerogative, but it's not really your obligation to be a part of that, to support it or challenge it. It's not your area of expertise. Sometimes it's not ours either, for what we do.
I don't think anybody was pointing the finger directly at Spuck.
Well, it's the way I've sat here.
I was talking about the relationship that I've known for over 20 years, regardless of leadership, has always been less than cordial. And we, no matter what side of the board you're on here, we've tried to make it better. And that's what we've been trying to say, so.
Counselor Brown? I was doing some research, and I went back through history on the number of times we've met, the Spuck and us. And I came across a quote from Gloria Bierling. She was on the council for 12 years, and then she was on the Spuck Commission for two years. And she said, "It's important to me to promote teamwork between Spuck and the city." She noted that she wanted the utilities commission to be proactive rather than reactive. So, that was 25 years ago, and I think that's something that we're slowly working on. And I think that we need to get a little bit better at it, and just, you know, it's necessary. We are symbiotic. We have a synergy, and we work together. And that's just the way this is set up. We need to communicate and work better together.
What was the date of that quote?
It was 1994. She was on.
Just the other day.
Yeah.
So, we can move forward here. We were talking about economic development, then we kind of went off on relationships. History and statutory authority of Shakopee Public Utilities?
Just real quick, Mayor, I know it's running late, and probably attention spans are getting shorter by the second, but we always like to promote that there's a proud tradition with the electric and water services provided to Shakopee. We're a unique city. As many of you know, we're one of the fastest-growing counties in the entire northern half of the United States for many years running. We're unique. We have a unique set of issues that we have in place. So, I provided booklets that we had. They're a little dated now. That was with our 100th anniversary of the first light going on in Shakopee. So, if you have questions on that. And then I also provided, just the way, and I think some of the problem that we have is, we're set up so uniquely different than most communities in the state of Minnesota, where the water system is separate from the city. Once again, it's set by state statutes. I've referred to those. So, it is a unique situation. And then also with the code, with the city of Shakopee, I've attached that for your view, too. And that's, I think, more for the new council members, and then with one of our new city commissioners. Mr. Clay's only been with us for a short period of time. And then we have a new commissioner that's starting here in a couple of weeks. So, we'd just like to provide that information. So, if there's any questions regarding that, I'd be glad to answer those.
Questions on that? Do you see respective roles of Spuck and the city of Shakopee discussion?
I think that was an item that the commission had brought up and talked about. I think we've probably spent the last couple of hours going over that. I don't know if there's any other commission comments on what our respective roles are in the community.
Terry, just one thing, and maybe it's probably more the next issue, but one of the things that we do here at the utility that's a little different is, if you want to get on the agenda, and I think this is not only for the council, but for the people at large, you contact Mr. Crooks, or you contact whoever the president is of the commission at time to get on the agenda. Either one of those two can approve that to make that happen. So, if you have those issues or you want to have, get ahold of the president or Mr. Crooks, and we can get you on the agenda to...
I know a developer had emailed John to get on the agenda, and then nothing happened of that, to talk about the water connection charge. So, I don't know whatever happened to that. John?
You want me to respond to that? That issue was with a late charge, I believe is the one they're referring to, that he made a direct request to be placed on the commission. We had emails back and forth. There was a clear violation that he paid that late. He knew what day it was. So, there was that late 5% charge that we have, or whatever the fee is. I don't know it off the top of my head. In preparing that information and going through the commission president, it was considered to be essentially a cut-and-dry issue. The company or the person was clearly late, and that they were not going to be, you know, allowed any waiver. We had allowed a waiver of a couple of weeks anyway. So, that's why that one was not placed on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, so just to address that, yes, John and I had that discussion. I guess we don't have to go into specifics of who it was. As John mentioned, the president has the, I guess, I don't know if you want to call it authority, that seems strong, but okay, the authority to... authority, that seems strong, but, okay, the authority to, to decide whether to put that on the agenda or not. We discussed the case. As John mentioned, there was no extr- excruciating, extenuating circumstances as to why they're late. They were fully accepting of the fact they were late, it was more of a, just try to see if they could get it waived, and they really didn't have any justification, so, and I actually, I did reveal that at the next commission meeting, that that had brought, then been brought up to my attention, and that decision was made, so that is on record, that, that was brought to our attention, and that decision was made.
Counselor Lehman?
Does your agenda have the area like ours that says concerned citizen?
We, you know what, Counselor Lehman, we don't, and that's something that I think, you know, the commission going forward, we should discuss having that option there. Now that we're actually getting to having the full agendas out on the website for people to view, you know, in the past, there was only agenda, this, we're actually the full packets besides, you know, information that can't be, or, yeah, can't be shown to the public, is getting out there. My view is, I think we should, even if we're just as, you know, 99% of the time, it's, we, we ask, and there, and there's nobody there, right?
And, and if, if you go down that road, I would make a suggestion, as we have done at this council, is if it's, if it's an item not on your agenda, and that no action will be taken that night on something that's brought forward, so therefore, if somebody comes before you and says, "I'm not, it's not on the agenda, I want to talk about X, Y, and Z," you're not there trying to fix it on the spot. You're gathering the information, your staff is, and, and saying thank you, and moving forward, and then staff can make personal contact with that individual during regular business hours the next day, work it out, and, and if it has to come back as an agenda item, your staff can make that determination and put it on your agenda for a future date if it's a policy discussion or something.
Yeah, I, I think we would follow closely that, but that's for the commission to decide.
Yep.
Commissioner?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I was probably the one who suggested the item on the agenda, and it, it was simply to recognize the fact that the city council is the elective body, is, is more responsive, or, or more of the body answering to the, the electorate, whereas the commission, you know, our focus and responsibility are to the, you know, customers and, and citizens of Shokapi, and getting back to what I had mentioned before, you know, our policies should be applied overall. And, and I don't think it appropriate, and maybe it's my personal view, to be in a position of picking loser, winners or losers. You know, to a certain extent, we, we try to accommodate economic development, but I don't think it's fair to the ratepayers, or the water users, that they subsidize, you know, individuals because somebody deems that their business would complement Shokapi. I, I think our, our policies, as compared to the councils, has to be more evenly impacted on, on citizens, and not favoring or disfavoring any particular citizens.
Well, Commissioner, as we spoke before, that you guys set your own policy, so I understand your view, but have the discussion at your board meeting in front of the folks that set the policy, which is you, I've said that like three times, the, yes, you, you set the policy and all the ratepayers. And if someone comes to challenge that policy, again, we, we don't set that policy. Just like if someone came before your board and said, "My taxes are too high," what would you tell them? "I'm over here to Gorman Street, we set that policy." If someone has a issue with a water fee, please come to that board, and please do not find that offensive, find that proper role definition to come before the policy, and then you can formulate your own response from the board that sets policy, that's all. That's how I view it.
And, and I view it the same way. And, and, you know, when we leave here, I will still view it the same way, and I will still view it that my responsibility is to not have one of our customers subsidize another set of our customers.
That's very good. So, we were talking about the prospective roles of Spuck in the city, and discussing that, again, the communication needs to get better, both on a staff level and a, on a policy board level, I believe that. Six, or?
Just, I'd like to see how we can measure that, and, and how we can, you know, maybe come back in a certain amount of time and, and put some, some thoughts together on, on some goals and some ideas, maybe your board can, can talk about that, and maybe some, just some reports back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Quietly sitting here and listening to this, and, and I've been taking some notes, and, and, you know.
Pull that, pull that mic a little closer.
Yeah, okay, can you hear me now? Anyhow, so, you know, the, the major part of the discussion was, in addition to the, you know, sharing of information and whatever, but the cost, the development fees and water connection charges and trunk fees and stuff. And I just want to make sure when we go back that we have a full understanding of what your thoughts are on this, and so, you know, I wrote down a few things, and one was that we have to look at becoming more efficient at what we do to try to, to, you know, bring down those costs. We discussed the possibility of using different materials, but I heard a hard no on, on that. We want to be, have quality materials underground in, in our use. And that, you know, we probably need to go back and review our policy on, on, you know, where the monies come from, and, and that might involve, you know, increases to ratepayers for the, the water charges. And I'm just wondering, are there any other things that, you know, you guys have been discussing this? Is there anything else on this list that we should be taking back to discuss?
So, John had brought up that you're going to have a 2019 rate study? Is that correct?
It's a 2019 look at the water connection.
Water connection.
And trunk water charges. It's not a rate study based for water rates.
So, I know that, and then I've known the consultants that you've used for the last 20-plus years. When I was on your board, I was a big proponent of trying to change and get fresh eyes and fresh looks on certain things. That's why you guys have a new auditor, because you'd been using the same one for a long time. Instead of an engineering firm, I would like to suggest that you use a financial firm, like Ellers, that looks at it. We are talking about some of the biggest funds within the utility. They know utilities, they know infrastructure, they know engineering, but they would look at it maybe in a different light. As I bring up about innovation and overtime, things change. That's important, and use different people for different, because they're going to look at it maybe a little different. I'm not talking about the outcome, if the outcome is the same, obviously. But I would like a financial firm instead of a engineering firm. I think you had, you know, you've used the, Shala Mattson, who got bought out and got bought out, right? Then you use the, you've used the progressive for a long time. I, I'd like you to use a financial firm, Ellers, and that's one of a couple, and that's just my view of that, rather than the same. And it would be the same test, they're going to get the same information, that's only how I look at it. Counselor Lehman?
I'm certainly not going to tell you which consultant to use, that would almost look like I'm stacking the deck for you. I'm not necessarily opposed to having two different viewpoints to it, a financial side and an infrastructure side, that kind of makes sense to me, but I'm certainly not going to say, "Hey, use my guy, because I want, I want my outcome."
I don't think that's what he was saying. He was saying the fresh set of eyes, you know.
John?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, our last study that was done in 2007, we had an engineering study, once that was done, on infrastructure costs, we did have a financial analysis, Northland Financial do that.
By Northland?
It was done by Bill Fahey. If you remember, he was a past city administrator here in Shokapi. Unfortunately, we won't be able to use Bill anymore, he's getting on in age, and he has been for many, many years, so, last time, we did do that approach, but we had the engineering side and then the financial side to look at those numbers.
And I remember him very well. When I speak of a financial firm, Northland Securities would, would not be the one to do an analysis of a rate. They're the one that, that, that want to sell the bonds in the end, and they, they were also your financial advisor. So, what I'm saying is, I want independent, use a financial to review, analyze, obviously, and, and, you know, not a, not an audit, but you have funds in hand, these fees that we've talked about, and you have, we're going to, you guys are on the cusp of close to $15 million with all development coming forward, a lot of money for a set amount in your CIP. So, when you look at expenditures in a CIP, and then try to set your rates, and so that's, that is how I'm looking at it. Whether that stays the same or changes, we don't know.
Anything else besides that? I mean, like, like I said, this is something that, you know, we, I think we all want to work on, and.
Right. So, I think that we've talked a lot, certainly learned a lot with the packet information. I would like to try to have a joint meeting again in August. By then, maybe we would have a preliminary of, of your rate study by then, maybe September. We've had one, a joint meeting in 2007, 12, or 11, 12, 14, and 19, so we've had some But if we're going to try to work together, get more aligned, have better communication, I would say sooner than later than, and, you know, clearly in the last several years, we haven't had one. Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chit, or Mr. Mayor, the only thing I see is, because of the growth and the availability of the staff, coming up with this upcoming building season, August is really not a good time for us. I think, and, Mr. Crooks, maybe you want to address this, but I think later would be, you know, you get into that November, December, we're a little bit better off than we would be in August, would be tough, I think.
Don't want to take the construction workers off the scaffolding, Terry?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? It's actually written in the Shokapi Code and Ordinances, if one of the bodies requests a joint meeting, the other one has to accommodate that. So, if there's a request from you, we'll make every accommodation within a reasonable time to meet. So, that's something that's always been in place, I think it works very well, I think it's worked very well in this case, that there was a Spuck, I, I believe it was Mr. Whiting at a, or Counselor Whiting, had mentioned that it was a good time for a joint meeting. We also had the same thought from our commission president, so when we do that, I, I think there's been a lot of progress here, we have a ways to go, but whenever one of the bodies requests a meeting, the other has to meet within a reasonable amount of time. So, that's very good language.
No, and I agree, and the, reading over some of the policies that abide by the city and the utility, membership rates and rules and regulations, right here, a joint meeting shall be held between the commission and the council when requested by either body.
Yep.
Let's see, define role of city council liaison, did we want to have a discussion on that, John?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, again, I was the one who suggested this for the agenda, and it goes back to the events of December last year, when the, the, you know, city liaison apparently had some concerns that I had not heard of, or the commission had not heard of in the year preceding, while I was sitting on the commission, and, and it sounded like there was a lot of concern that had been discussed that, by the city council, or council members, and, you know, rather than, you know, bring those particular issues to us in an orderly and professional manner, so that we could have the kind of communication that we've contemplated by, you know, some of the discussion here, it was, you know, it was sort of very critical of the Spuck, and, and actually contained a lot of misinformation, and it was in a public forum, and, and, you know, again, going back to what we had discussed about staffs cooperating, which I think is, is critical, and, and I'm, I'm sort of surprised at some of the, the, the problems that have occurred between staff, but also our organizations. And we don't have a liaison on city council, obviously, you have a liaison on the commission, and I would hope that you would use that liaison to keep the, the conduit of, of communication open, and if there are concerns, that you bring them to us through the liaison, the liaison can bring up anything and everything, either during the reports or have a particular agenda item, but the, the way that it was handled suggested to me that, you know, perhaps the liaison at the time did not really understand that that might have been a more appropriate way of, of raising these issues with the, because, you know, the, the liaison had sat through many meetings when these rates were not only discussed but voted upon, and we had never heard anything, you know, in the form of an objection to those rates or concerns from the city council. So, all I would like is, again, along the lines of keeping the, the lines of communication open, that the city council as a body, and the city administrator, I mean, if there is, is some problem with our staff, that the, the city council's liaison can bring those directly to the commission, and we will consider them, and, and we can act like, you know, two bodies that are both serving the same purpose, and that is the citizens of Shokapi.
Is that, that was back when you were raising your rates?
No.
Is that what the concern was? No?
Yeah.
Well, it was on the rates. It was on a board. No, it was on the, it was on our trunk water charge and our water capacity charge.
Remember, the liaison does not have a vote on your board. Now, I think in some of the documentation, we can appoint a city council member as a voting member of your body, and maybe that, that's a potential, but when I was liaison, you guys voted. I, I could comment, I'm sure I could bring discussion forth, but at that point, I'm not sure that the city understood, you know, kept up on where, you know, where your rates were, what the, was on your agenda, and I'm sure they do, but it's not our position to tell you guys how to run that board, so, but I agree with you, it should be commented on and brought forth, and I'm sure Mr. Lehman will, will handle that well.
I'm pretty shy, I don't know.
Mayor, having done that, having been council liaison for five years, the utility, back in, a few years ago anyways, and it, it's a conduit, this is Matthew said, it's to provide information based on what the council's doing, and also the same thing to bring back to the council of what we're doing. And I think if nothing else, that failed. That position obviously did not understand what was going on, or what information to bring back. I don't know, I didn't see the reports that were done, but we were blindsided, and we should not ever be blindsided by a council, by the liaison to the utility board. That person should have open, open communication with, with John and with whoever the president is, and, and that needs to occur.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I want to just put it out there that, yes, I'm currently the liaison for this council to the utilities, but I was not at the time of.
Correct. It's not you.
Of the, of the situation that you're talking about. And I will do everything in my power as a liaison to convey this council and staff's concerns related to Spuck to the commissioners and staff, and likewise, I will convey my, in my reports as a liaison, what pertinent information at your meetings I picked up on and report back, as I have been, to this council.
Very good.
John?
Oh, I, I, I think that's fine, no, it's, it's great, and, nothing against Terry or Jay, but Matt, you're probably the best liaison we've ever had. Two whole meetings.
You never saw me.
It was three, by the way.
Oh, okay.
What about Steve? He was liaison.
Oh, that's right, yes, I'm sorry, he's all the way at the end of the.
He's slighted.
That's right.
All right. More on this, last six G policy, I apologize, I don't, I don't know why we're, policy on the city sanitary sewer fund and storm sewer fund. And who's going to present this?
You know what, I added that to the agenda, and I've since determined in the last three hours that I don't care anymore. So you can skip it.
Would you like to, if we meet again down the line, have this on there?
We'll see.
Is there information that you need?
No. We're good.
Okay. All right. Moving ahead then, 7A, there's actually for our review, city council and the last Shakopee Public Utility Joint Meeting minutes of May 6, 2014, for our review. Counselor Lehman, other business?
Mayor, I'd just like to thank the utilities and their staff, our staff, council, this joint get-together, like I said before, I think it's a great opportunity to get the information out to the general public of how all of this works, and I think that's half of the battle, to be honest with you. I think when people understand how things work a little more in detail, they can put two to two together, and sometimes it takes the pain off. You know, I try to tell my customers, if you put oil in your engine, it lasts longer and it doesn't cost as much. Well, thank you for coming.
Commissioner Moore?
Mr. Mayor, so one item under other business, maybe I'm going to be a little selfish for the commission and use this forum to get the information out. Previously on the agenda was a discussion about the Woodbury decision, right? City staff did ask questions of our lawyer, too, and I don't know, John, if you want, if you have that readily available, but just to get it out there, since it has been, and like the Prior Lake American, I think, is the right newspaper, that discussion. And John, I don't know if you want to comment, but essentially, the utility is not affected by that decision, but John can give more detail.
There is a question for information in regards to, you know, our thoughts and our take on the Woodbury lawsuit and the Supreme Court decision. So we looked into that issue. We had contacted our attorney. There has no bearing on our utilities as it is because by state, there's state statute that authorizes us to set water rates, to set what they call availability charges, to set what they call water connection charges. So by state statute, we're allowed to do that, and in that state statute also, it states that, you know, these fees could be charged for the eventual build-out of the system. So there seemed to be a disconnect. The state statute didn't allow what happened in the Woodbury case. I know in articles that we read that it doesn't seem to be affecting the city of Shakopee, and they had made some wise decisions and they get caught in that. I know that city of Prior Lake is, it's going to cost them quite a bit of money, but we just provided that information. We weren't sure if we wanted to have that as a discussion item or not, but that was included in the information I sent to the city.
Yeah, and the only reason I didn't include that was as you and I talked, Mr. Crooks, we were satisfied with that, and we knew it was going to be a long meeting.
Yep.
So there's some other surrounding communities that are more concerned than our community. I'm glad that you have a legal opinion. Fold that up, put it in the vault. You know, I think that Shakopee is doing a pretty good job here from that, but we all have to be cognizant of things like that. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I think for everybody that's listening, we should have probably started by explaining what the Woodbury case was, because you could sit here and listen to this conversation and think maybe it had something to do with water, electricity, when it didn't. The Woodbury, Minnesota Supreme Court case relating to Woodbury was related to road Shakopee doesn't charge them kind of fees, so they're, doesn't apply to us, it may to other communities, and it doesn't connect with water and electricity. So it wasn't specific to water, electricity, it was to development fees, roads specifically in that case. I think that sums it up, does it not?
Close enough.
Close enough? All right. So any other business? I want to make sure we get done at 11. The utility cuts off the lights at 11. No, no.
You're on the plan, right?
So with that, President, where?
I'll motion the-
Make a motion to adjourn to-
Oh, to March 18.
18.
Second?
Second. We have a motion to second to adjourn to March 18 to 5:00 p.m. Any discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned as a public utility?
I like 5 o'clock better, by the way.
Counselor Lehman?
Make a motion to adjourn the city council to March 19, 2019 at 7:00 p.m.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned at 10:50.